All right, good evening, everyone. Let's go ahead and get the meeting started, and we're gonna start with the roll call.
Thank you. Mayor LaBarre?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Case?
Here.
Councilmember Connors?
Here.
Councilmember Nakai?
Here.
Councilmember Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Zuluaga?
Here.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. One patient.
All right, this evening, we're gonna start with item 3A, and that is the appointment of council members to fill a vacated council term. And I'm gonna go ahead and let Suzanne tell us how that's happening.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor LaBarre, for the audience's sake, just so they know, we held council interviews at 6:00 PM. We have two applicants. We have Dawn DeZellum and Carol Harvey, who have both applied to be on the city council. Our council did the interviews and asked all their questions at 6:00, and now we're at the point where council needs to make a decision. So the process, because there are six of us, there could be a possibility of a tie vote. So I want to go through what the process would look like tonight for this. So what we have prepared are ballots that will go to each council member. Each council member's name is on the ballot with a choice of who they would like to vote for, whether you would check the box either Dawn or check the box for Carol. I'll collect ballots when you're done. We will read every ballot into the record. So it would say, for instance, Mayor LaBarre voted, and we would say how you voted. So it goes on to the record, gets recorded in the minutes. If we have a clear winner, which would be four council members picking someone, we're done. That council member can be appointed this evening. We can swear them in, and they both are prepared to take their seat tonight. We have been keeping up with them for the last 10 days on the council meeting, the council packet. They're up to speed and ready to get the job done tonight. In the event that we do have a tie, the first round, we will ask you to vote again to see maybe if someone changes their, if you have dialogue, and if someone changes their mind, we'll do the tie vote two times. After the second tie vote, if we cannot come to a resolution, we will do what's allowed by state statute is a council. It's a game of chance. We've done this before in the city, and that's the process that we will do. I have our card shuffler, which we've used before, a deck of brand-new cards. We would put them in the card shuffler. We would shuffle the cards up. Ms. Harvey, Mr. DeZellum would each pick a card, and believe it or not, the high card would win, and that person is seated. This is dictated by us in state statute. It happens in municipalities all the time. It sounds like it's an archaic thing, but some of you have been present for when we've done it. We've done all different ways of games of chance, and the card shuffling has been the one that's worked the best for us. So I am going to turn the floor over to you if you want to say anything else, or if you want me just to hand out ballots.
Let's just go ahead and get the ballots handed out and get the process going.
Base is high, right?
I was just gonna ask that.
I play cards.
Oh, you know.
What's Joker?
Did anyone answer? There's a B.
Oh, it's the high one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hold the Joker.
Oh, yeah, what about a Joker? That's wild.
Okay, Mayor, with your permission, I'll open them and we'll read them to the record. We have Mayor Pro Tim Case has voted for Carol Harvey. Mayor LaBarre has voted for Carol Harvey. Councilmember Connors has voted for Dawn DeZellum. Councilmember Nakai has voted for Carol Harvey. Councilmember Neil has voted for Carol Harvey. And Councilmember Zuluaga has voted for Dawn DeZellum. So Ms. Harvey has won by four to two votes.
Very good.
Thank you, council.
Yes, thank you, council. Your questions are excellent, and the respondents were also very good, so.
With your permission, Mayor, may I have Ms. Harvey join me up here, and we'll get her vote up off this?
Wonderful.
I see. Would you put this in over there for her? So we have one for everyone. I'll have you join me up here, Carol.
And Carol, just so you know, and the audience knows really quick, we're not voting by electronics this evening because we weren't sure who would be sworn in. So we're just doing verbal votes this evening, so. Yep.
Right hands and repeat after me. I, Carol Harvey, do solemn swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and of the state of Colorado, the charter and ordinances of the city of Woodland Park, and then I will faithfully perform the duties of a city council member upon return of downtown to Congress. Congratulations. Thanks, your grace. We had a need for every candidate. You did, just so you know.
You may be seated. Yes, we have Dawn. We have everything for everybody.
Welcome, Carol.
Welcome.
So I have served on staff with you up here, and now with you twice up here, sitting with you. We go way back.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and start with item 3B, and that is the appointment of the Downtown Development Authority member to fill a vacated term. And Suzanne?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor LaBarre. As council will recall from the staff report that you've received in this packet, Matt McCracken resigned from his position on, if I may, the DDA instead of. So that left a position open, and the city council has had asked that I advertise for this position along with the DDA. We posted it. We did the public notices, did all of the advertising for interested candidates. This position is to fill a term that expires on June 30th, 2024. Having done all of that, I received one application for this position, and it's Mr. Eric Cabrera, who is here with us in the audience this evening and available for questions that council may have of him. May I invite him to the podium, please?
Sir?
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
If you'll just give the public and the council an idea of why you're interested in running, and a little bit about yourself and history, that would be great. And then each council member will have an opportunity to ask you a question.
Sure, yeah, fair enough. My name is Eric Cabrera. I moved to Woodland Park, Colorado in 2017. I'm currently a local business owner and resident. I have had a previous career of serving the public, and it's something that has always been a desire of mine to continue doing after my retirement. And being a local business owner and looking at the very unique time that we're in with the development of the Taba House and local businesses, increased traffic, there's gonna be a number of issues or topics that do come up, such as possession, safety. There's gonna be traffic, you know, guidelines that will have to be followed, redirection. And there's gonna be a number of items that do come up. And as a local business owner, I do feel that I provide the service to benefit other business owners and the communities that we serve as well.
Very good. And I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna start with Councilmember Case for questions. Oh, maybe I should. Councilmember Connors, do you have a question?
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, well, while you're thinking, I'll think on my feet. The DDA has just finished a huge project.
Yes, sir.
What do you think should be the next thing they should attempt?
Along with the current project at hand that is gonna be started, you know, given the name, the Taba House, there's gonna be the impact on the local residents. It's gonna draw a lot of traffic that's from outside of Woodland Park, which the downtown district does need. There's a lot of revenue that is gonna be drawn to our city, tax base as well. But we also have to respect the people that live here, so we have to really look at controlled and safe growth that's gonna benefit both the businesses and the community at large.
Then I have just a follow-up question. On that same side of the Highway 24, we have very limited parking. Should that be something we should be looking at to help with the safety of having crossed back and forth across 24 to get to the businesses on basically the, what would you call it, the south side of 24?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nakai?
I actually have nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Neil?
Could you, I had the opportunity to have a cup of coffee with Eric, and he has a very interesting story. Can you tell? I think you're a very resilient person and creative beyond belief, and I think that's why I would support you being on the DDA because we're gonna need some very creative. Can you kind of give us, go back and tell us a little bit about you and your family?
Sure. And where I think you're wanting to go with this. I was on my own at the age of 12. I was homeless, grew up in New York and Queens, and had to grow up pretty quick, had to find ways to survive and realize that no matter where you came from, if you set goals and aspirations, you can get there. There's a lot of lessons that are to be learned in good experiences, and I think more importantly, there's a lot of lessons to be learned during negative experiences. So through that, I was able to get on my feet at a very young age, did not complete high school. I have a GED, but I was able to move down to Florida and got on the fire department. I retired as the rank of lieutenant, and I was able to have a very successful career in the fire service because I knew to keep my mouth shut, my eyes and ears open, look at everything from both sides of the table, and make the best important decision possible with the information I had in front of me. Through that, I've built a number of businesses, feel that I've had a great success with my family, my wife, and two youngest kids are here. Our oldest is at a youth group right now. You know, I've learned through that process where to put priorities and understand the importance of community and what it takes to serve the community.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey?
I have no questions now, but don't count on that happening the rest of the evening.
Councilmember Zuluaga?
Thank you for applying for the DDA. You obviously have a finger on the pulse. You are the new owner for the donut mill.
Yes, sir.
So you have tapped into the heart and the tummy of the community.
Yes, and I've actually had the privilege to talk to a lot of local residents about change, growth. They understand that growth wants to happen, and I hear the voices and the comments that they want to preserve the identity of Woodland Park. And as a historic business owner, it's one of the oldest buildings in the city. It's got a lot of history that's in it. It serves and supports a lot of the school sports teams, local sports teams. I've never said no to anybody that's ever come in and asked for any kind of donation. So hearing those voices and seeing what's needed, and how many people do come through the door asking for something. I think delivering and returning, you know, that appreciation to the community, but also respecting the fact that we are gonna grow, and we do need to preserve the identity of Woodland Park.
Thank you very much. Suzanne, could you clarify for us how long this appointment is for?
It is until June 30th, 2024.
So it's not even, just a year? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. My only question is, I hear you mentioning traffic a lot, and a lot of that traffic is centered on Highway 24. And I was just curious if you're familiar with who controls the flow of that traffic, whether it's the city or if it's CDOT?
I am not familiar with who does.
Okay.
I'm just coming from a standpoint of looking out the window, the donut mill, day in and day out, and watching people cross right there in front of us when there's a crosswalk not very far ahead.
Right.
So I've watched it a number of times.
Yeah.
Given my history and with my previous career, I've seen the results of people not using crosswalks, and none of it's good.
Right, right. It would actually, it's primarily CDOT, but it would be a collaboration between the city and CDOT, but they primarily rule the highway. So oftentimes, we don't get a say, so just for clarification.
I appreciate that.
But, okay, council, any further questions?
No, I'd just like to thank you for applying in your interest.
I appreciate the opportunity.
And I'd like to thank you for the cinnamon rolls as big as your head.
You're welcome. I can't take credit for it. I'm just fortunate enough to be a part of it. I'm just continuing it.
Councilmember Nakai?
Yes, I was gonna thank you for applying too, and then ask you to please bring back the original recipe for the donuts.
You got it.
We've got some demanding people up here.
I'm here to serve.
Well, thank you for applying, and we're gonna go ahead and let council take a, make a motion and take a vote.
I'll make a motion to appoint to the Downtown Development Authority Eric Cabrera.
I'll second.
Thank you, council. LaBarre?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Very good. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I mean, I'm coming here.
Hello.
I, Eric Cabrera. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Colorado, its overall, the charter and ordinances of the city of Woodland Park, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of member of the DDA upon which I'm about to enter. I knew by the last name.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. A fellow New Yorker, I had to say, I had to make the connection. Yeah.
All right, we're gonna move on to item 3C, which is a proclamation recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month, and our presenter is Ashley Shields, and she's the Suicide Prevention Coordinator for Tyler County.
So I have never done a proclamation, but I wanted to, I have a speech here. Am I reading the proclamation, or are you reading?
I'll read it for you, so you don't say whereas 800 times.
Yeah, I was wondering how I was gonna incorporate that in. Thank you. And thank you, council. I did want to thank the Woodland Park City Council for going on the record in support of Mental Health Awareness Month. This is an opportunity for us to support the health of ourselves and those in our community. Mental Health Awareness Month was established in 1949 to increase awareness of the importance of mental health and wellness in Americans' lives and to celebrate recovery from mental illness. Mental health is essential for a person's overall health. Prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can recover from mental disorders and live full and productive lives. Us rural communities are often left out of the conversation, but we continue to be strengthened through supporting each other and talking openly about mental health. When community members act together and support one another with their mental health needs, the community as a whole becomes more well. While mental illnesses are similar in both rural and urban communities, the circumstances and access to treatment look different. The National Rural Health Association tells us that rural residents face more obstacles in finding behavioral health services. As a result, distinct mental health differences are seen rurally compared to El Paso County. Studies have also shown that because the risk of suicide is higher in rural areas, this makes it much more vital that individuals seek out and have access to help. The suicide rates are near twice as great in those in the most rural of areas in the US compared to the most urban of areas. Tyler County is unfortunately experiencing the same behavioral healthcare challenges faced by many rural communities across our state and the country. Accessibility. Tyler County residents often travel long distances to receive services, are less likely to be insured for services, and providers are less likely to recognize a mental illness. Availability. Chronic shortages of mental health professionals exist, and mental health providers are more likely to practice in urban communities like El Paso County, so providers are scarce. A shortage of care contributes to losses in productivity and increases in hospitalization and suicide. Affordability. Some residents can't afford health insurance or out-of-pocket care costs if they lack health insurance. Acceptability. We are more susceptible to the stigma of receiving mental health care in small communities where everyone knows each other. There are fewer choices of trained professionals, which can lead to a lack of confidentiality as well as a reliance on the informal care of family members, close friends, and religious leaders. The myths that surround mental illness, like it's your own fault, it's all in your head, just snap out of it, can be deadly. Dispelling those myths is the goal of the Mental Health Awareness Month and the Tyler County Mental Health Alliance. So where do we start? We can start by recognizing that mental illness is a medical condition, not a character flaw or a figment of the imagination. Those who face a mental health or substance use disorder merit the same respect as anyone else. Share your story. If you have a mental health or substance use disorder or care for someone who does, we want to hear from you. Describing your journey is one of the most powerful ways to demystify mental illness. These past few years presented so many different challenges and obstacles that tested our individual and collective strength and resiliency. The good news is that there are tools and resources available that can support the well-being of individuals and community. One thing we can all do to help improve access to mental health is simply talking about it. In addition, talking about mental health can open up the door for people to feel more comfortable and less afraid to seek help. It's important to remember that working on your mental health and finding tools that help you thrive takes time. Change won't happen overnight. Instead, by focusing on small changes, you can move through stressors and develop long-term strategies to support yourself on an ongoing basis. Woodland Park is a wonderful place to live and work, and together we continue to make strides even when faced against the steepest of challenges. I want to lift up and celebrate everyone in this room, the Woodland Park City Council, and those of you joining us online who continue to support those that are struggling and work together for the benefit of this community. I also want to remind everyone that it's okay to not be okay, that our individual struggles are real, and that these are people around us who want, there are people around us who want to help, even when it feels like they aren't. Throughout this month of May, let's all make it a priority to recognize how important it is to check in on each other and keep in mind that we never know what it is that someone may be going through. And I wanted to share a letter from, her name is Elizabeth Pate, and she wrote a blog on The Mighty, the website, if you haven't been there. I encourage you to go, and she titles it "The One Who Loves Me With My Mental Illness." She is a wife and a mother of three, and she was diagnosed with bipolar disorder eight years ago. So this is her letter. "I want to say thank you for loving me. I know there are days when it can't be easy. It must be hard to watch the one you love suffer from a faceless pain. It must be lonely at times because so often I'm not present. Thank you for never yelling at my irrational rants. Thank you for understanding that when I get upset after forgetting to take out meat for supper, it's not just about dinner. Thank you for seeing that in my mind it's confirmation I'm a failure at everything I do. Thank you for not accepting that. Thank you for telling me for the 1,000th time how great you think I am. I'm sorry for all the times I asked not to be touched. Thank you for seeing I was just overwhelmed by thoughts beyond my control and that it's not that, it's not that I don't love you. Thank you for teaching me unconditional love. Thank you for hearing me when I scream and learning to speak my language. Thank you for sacrificing things that are important to you when I don't want to be alone. Thank you for coming in and washing the dishes without saying a word. Thank you for seeing the panic in my eyes as we enter a crowded event and walking behind me, so it's you brushing against me, not a stranger. Thank you for taking my phone away and making me rest when it's obvious I'm not going to do it on my own. Thank you for reminding me to eat and sleep and enjoy the moment. Thank you for never making me explain my thoughts. Thank you for just accepting when I say I just can't. Thank you for making mistakes and letting me know everyone makes them. Thank you for being you, and most of all, thank you for letting me be me. Thank you for the warm, safe place in which to be broken. Thank you for loving the scars and showing me what it means to be grateful for every one of them." And that's all I have to say, but I do want to introduce Sarah Lee as well. She will be presenting on another piece.
Hi. So she is, we have been working together on some support groups and things for parents, and she has so much great information about the brain and how I'm not even speaking into the mic.
Okay, no, thank you, Ashley. Good evening. My name is Sarah Lee. I'm a long-term resident of Tyler County. I'm a 28-year veteran educator, 17 of which I was honored to provide here in Woodland Park in the schools, and I got to spend a lot of time helping our students with their mental health. I want to thank you all so much for formally acknowledging the importance of mental health in our community because mental health is not a catchphrase. It's not a bunch of buzzwords. It is health. It's key to a strong and vibrant community, and so I wanted to share a little bit with you about the brain, mental health, learning, and resources that were once part of the community at the school level. Fight, flight, or freeze, this is how our brain responds when we're under stress. The brain, as complex as it is, does not delineate between the severity of the stress that's coming at you. From losing your homework to spilling coffee down yourself in traffic or physical or emotional abuse or the trauma of war, our brains respond to stress in the same way. And repeated or chronic stressors are shown to cause PTSD, emotional and physical responses, a decrease in the abilities to be calm, learn, self-regulate emotions, and function in society. As adults, we have, in most cases, learned to work through stress, trauma, and crisis that come into our lives. We use healthy activities, mentors, spirituality, physical health, mental health, generosity, and family support to navigate tough times. These ways of coping may be unconscious to many of us, and for the most part, we have the privilege of accessing the support we need. For children who are undergoing chronic stress, adults need to provide mental health support in order for them to function on a daily basis. Without this support, it is impossible for young people to learn information, process that information, and retain it in long-term memory. That's right, impossible. Research, scientific research has shown that stress at any level activates our, quote, survival brain. In short, rushes of adrenaline are sent to the amygdala. The amygdala is responsible for emotions, survival instincts, and memory. Because there is a threat, the brain is only focused on survival. When this occurs, we literally cannot remember what is happening. I saw this firsthand when I served as dean of students at Woodland Park High School. Students who were in conflict, trauma, or crisis were not being cagey when they said they didn't know why they did what they did or what was happening. They literally did not know. were not being cagey when they said they didn't know why they did what they did or what was happening. They literally did not know. Through restorative practices and evidence-based system used across the school district for conflict resolution, I was able to work with students using questions designed to help the student calm down, process the event, and begin to remember why it occurred and what steps could be taken to restore relationships and change behaviors. The hippocampus, which is connected to the amygdala, is responsible for storing and retrieving memories. Again, when we are in any kind of stress, that flood of adrenaline to the hippocampus turns off our ability to store and retrieve memories and simply acts in our basic survival. Interestingly enough, the two structures of the brain mainly responsible for long-term remembering are located in the emotional part of the brain. So what does this mean for young people? Without access to mental health support in schools and the community, young people cannot learn to regulate their brains to recall memories from the hippocampus and store new memory, new learning in the amygdala. In short, when a student comes into school in crisis, under stress, or is experiencing trauma, they cannot learn. Think back to when you were in school. There were hard days. None of us are immune to that. And if you really lean into those times, you can probably recall days where you remember stress, but not what you were supposed to be learning in school. You may remember those quote-unquote troubled kids who were a disruption in class or were behind in their learning. They were all too often labeled as lost causes and dealt with as discipline problems. But today, we have scientific studies, research involving hundreds of thousands of data points and medical evidence that proves that when mental health is recognized as a priority and we embrace the holistic approach to learning, students thrive. Earlier, I mentioned seven areas of strength: healthy activities, mentors, spirituality, physical health, mental health, generosity, and family support. These areas were identified through multiple research studies and are used to teach people about their strengths and how they can lean into them during times of trauma, stress, and crisis. The program that created this is called Sources of Strength and was founded in nineteen ninety-eight and is used across the United States and Canada as an evidence-based suicide and prevention program in schools, churches, communities, and nonprofits. When this program was active at Woodland Park High School, a marked change in suicidal ideation and the overall well-being of students was noted. And lives were saved. In the fall of twenty twenty-two, the day after new Sources of Strength peer leaders were trained as quote "agents of change and connectors to help," a student contacted their adult advisor. They had been taught that breaking the silence and connecting peers to help was not only important to building community, but vital for saving lives. The peer leader reported that their friend was sending out goodbye emails and was planning to end life. Because that student, that peer leader, had been empowered to connect to help, had a trusted adult at the school to reach out to, and saw how powerful hope, help, and strength can be in the prevention of suicide, they saved a life that day. The adult advisor called nine-one-one and the school administrator, and within minutes, emergency services were at the home of the friend, and they received the help they needed. This is but one story of how hope, help, and strength, how positive mental health, how a positive friend, a mentor, a trusted adult, and safe spaces for processing trauma, stress, and crisis save lives. Without support from counselors, social workers, therapists, educated teachers, mentors, and coaches, and programs like Sources of Strength and Restorative Practices, our children cannot learn, cannot thrive, cannot survive. Thank you for making mental health a priority.
Hey Suzanne, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation recognizing May is Mental Health Awareness Month, twenty twenty-three, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas everyone's experienced times of stress and struggles in their lives, and whereas community understanding and available support and services can greatly impact a person's ability to handle their stress and struggle and move forward. And whereas promoting mental health and wellness leads to higher overall productivity, better educational outcomes, lower crime rates, stronger economies, lower healthcare costs, improved family life, improved quality of life, and increased lifespan. And whereas research recognizes that adverse childhood experiences, which include but are not limited to physical, emotional, and sexual abuse, physical and emotional neglect, household dysfunction, untreated mental illness, incarceration of household members, domestic violence and separation or divorce involving household members are traumatic experiences that can have a profound effect on a child's developing brain and body and can result in poor physical and mental health during childhood and adulthood. And whereas studies show that the effects of adverse child experiences, childhood experiences are felt by people regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or socioeconomic status. Whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, faith-based organization, nonprofit agency, and citizen shares accountability for the community's mental health needs and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. And whereas the city of Woodland Park recognizes the impact of awareness and education access to services and acceptance of the importance of mental health and well-being to a person's overall success. Now therefore, the members of City of Woodland Park City Council hereby proclaim month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Woodland Park and encourages our citizens to help promote the awareness and education of mental health done this fourth day of May, twenty twenty-three, in the city of Woodland Park. And then I do have the proclamation, and if council members would be willing to sign it, I'll pass it down.
Mayor, can I ask Ashley a clarifying question?
Sure.
Ashley, you talked about, oops, all my notes are everywhere. You talked about, uh, tools and resources. Could you please let the, uh, citizens know where those are available in either online or in the city of Woodland Park or in Teller County, or all?
Yes, um, and so one of, part of the the intent of the Mental Health Alliance is to make things accessible to Teller County residents specifically, and so we do have a website. It's www dot tcmha dot org. And you can go there and access, um, local resources. You're able to, um, it, it, it will help you. On the left, there will be a checklist, and you can pick and choose what works best for you and what services that you need. And, um, it will provide some of those Teller County specific resources for you that fit your needs, but also um, in El Paso County if they're not available here.
Can you give that website again, please?
www dot tcmha dot org. And I can send, can I send a link to, I will send a link to her. And, um, we're, this is a work in progress, but we are at a point now where we're hoping to share stories of Teller County residents who may be struggling, and it could be anonymously, but we really want to have a blog there as well. Right now, it's resource-focused.
Very good. Good question, Robert. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much for that information. And we're going to go ahead and move on to, um, item three D, and that is a celebration and congratulations of the Woodland Park High School welding team on their state champion placements.
You can't stand behind me. Thank you for having us and recognizing these awesome guys. Uh, Gary Adamson, I'm the welding teacher at the high school. And, uh, these guys all qualified, got first place, and are headed to nationals. That last year, they got second place, both the fabrication team and Jarrett over here for the technical welding. And so they were hungry for success, and that is super exciting. You know, it's never been through this in my career, so these guys have incredible work ethic and are really driven, and it's been awesome to have them since freshmen, right? Lived through COVID, all that stuff.
Very good.
And, uh, so this is really exciting. Um, Braden Salem, he's part of the fabrication team, and Jacob Brooks, and Cam Spann, and then Jarrett Freed, uh, went on to, he got first place in the technical welding, which is very competitive. But all these guys did an incredible job and want to thank, uh, their hard work and perseverance. So, uh, where's the stuff, the goods? So. You guys can kind of go around and show people and also talk to them. For fabrication team, they built, uh, quite a large table, and that was held down at Pueblo Community College for this year's state competition. Uh, so obviously, we don't have that, and they kept it anyway. Um, but if you'd like to see some of the drawings that they have to work through, uh, they do have to work through process qualification records and welding procedure specifications. And so they, there is quite a bit of blueprint reading and also technical documents that they have to follow, and they've mastered all these things, which is great. Um, our national strip is scheduled for June nineteenth to the twenty-third, uh, in Atlanta, Georgia, and, uh, we'll be going out there. We are currently doing a metal scrap drive on the twentieth to raise funds for that. Um, and are doing some other things for fundraising. I, I am also, uh, with their help, running a welding camp through the Fabricator Manufacturers Association. It's called Things, uh, Bolts and Think of a Jigs, but Nuts Bolts Think of a Jigs, and, uh, that's for thirteen-to-sixteen-year-olds at the high school for one week from June fifth tonight. And that's also a fundraiser for us that we're going to get twenty-five hundred out of. So, um, parents have been awesome. Corey Freed is setting up a fundraising site uh, for us to help collect funds, and it's all been really good. So, do you guys have anything to say? Yes.
Sure. With your projects, then your coach, and we'll have pictures, and the mayor was like.
Okay, that sounds great.
So we'll have you just right in the front there, face. And you can show the council members your projects.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. So what made you different?
And you, and you do have them, uh, getting their.
So this is something similar to the fabrication.
And each of them have already got their business cards being created so that they could start reaping the rewards of their hard work.
Absolutely.
It does just be a guy.
Oh, wow. And now, is this a birdhouse? You can hold that.
You're going to hold two projects?
Yeah. We're wrong, they are talkers.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just giving the crowd an opportunity to step out, so. All right, up next, under three E, we have a welcome and introduction to Justin Kurth. He's the field representative and outreach coordinator for Congresswoman Brittany Peterson.
Uh, good evening, uh, mayor and council. I appreciate the, the welcoming. Um, here to represent Congresswoman Brittany Patterson, um, her, uh, as she said, I'm a field representative. I'm based out of Canyon City. And, uh, my family and I have lived in Fremont County since two thousand and eleven, and the Congresswoman's soft fit for me to, uh, continue, you know, my, my career in public service to the, uh, to at least the six rural counties of the district. Um, the two metro ones being Brumfield and Jeffco. Um, but represented also are Teller, Lake, Park, Chafee, Fremont, and Custer. Uh, the Congresswoman, I'm, I'm just going to share basically just some, for, some FYI stuff first, and then tell you what I can, what I'm here to do, uh, on behalf of the Congresswoman. So first and foremost, she's on the House Financial Services Committee, uh, which includes her, uh, subcommittee assignments at the Housing and Insurance Subcommittee and the National Security and Illicit Finance and International Financial Solution, uh, uh, excuse me, International Financial Institutions Subcommittee. And then she's also on, uh, several caucuses to include the Problem Solvers Caucus, which is one of them, is basically an equal number of Republicans and Democrats in the count, in the, in the Congress. Uh, her first bill that was introduced within the last couple, or, uh, yeah, last couple of weeks was the Stop the Import of Fentanyl Act, uh, H R twenty-six sixteen for the, uh, political nerds out there. Um, and it would establish, uh, within the Drug Enforcement Agency, a national center to titled National Center to Stop the Import of Illicit Synthetic Drugs. Are some of our more, most where we're already engaging with communities, uh, across the district, um, includes something that occurs annually called Community Project Funding, comes out of the house as requests, from the, the community to say, you know, where are your priorities? Where, where do you see the priority for funding needed in your community? And one, um, one thing we're, we've already reached out to, uh, on the, uh, the, the Teller County community as a whole is on the radium mitigation, uh, and, and, uh, the Teller for new, for new Teller equipment, or excuse me, for the Teller County Water and Sanitation District One, for new equipment and new building for the treatment to reduce the, the level of combined, uh, radium. Uh, what I want to also share with you is that if you or any, um, any of your community members feel like there's opportunities that you, uh, you would like to hear more about, like grant opportunities through the federal government, or if you have, um, issues that you're experiencing with the federal government, that's we can, we can be engaged on either solutions, problems, or the in-between, okay? So, um, don't hold back. The Canyon Office, I'm going to be there personally Mondays and Wednesdays, Tuesdays and Thursdays. I may be there, but I may, what is more likely is I'll be, uh, throughout the rest of those rural counties performing more mobile office hours, making sure that the, the office is accessible to, uh, folks in all those counties. I plan on having those mobile office hours in Teller County in June. I haven't set that date yet, but we will, and we'll get the information out to everybody as soon as we can. Um, the, the last point I want to hit on real quick is that, uh, I'm an employee of the People's House. So if you come expecting to talk politics, I can listen, but I won't share. That's my duty to you and to the Congresswoman, and that's what she expects of me. So that goes to you or any other member of the public listening. So that is all. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take any.
Counsel, do you have political questions for it? Counsel, any questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming and, and, uh, thank the Congresswoman, too, because I know you guys have kept us in your email loop, and you update us when you meet, and you've kept us very informed, and we do appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for coming this evening.
Happy to. Yeah, I'll be back.
All right, we are off to item four, additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. We don't have any. And off to item five. We've got consent calendar, and we have five A approval of April sixth, twenty twenty-three, and April twenty, twenty twenty-three, regular city counting council meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Labar. As you mentioned, we have two sets of minutes for council's attention. I do, um, have to bring a request from Councilmember Zulawaga that he's made of me to make some amendments to the minutes, and I have them here. I'm going to give them to him and let him present what he feels the changes should be and see how council wants to proceed.
We're good. So um. Two, uh, two areas to change. So um, ten E approval of resolution nine oh five series twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving the Woodland Station Development Agreement and authorizing Woodland Park. Uh, Downtown Development Authority to convey the Woodland Station property to Tabah House. Uh, I'm requesting to add the following uh to the minutes for the record. Councilmember Zuluaga stated that he was concerned that the disposition development agreement from two thousand and nine and the two amendments were not included in the packet for council to review. And see the consequences of Zulawaga stated that an agreement is between the city council and DDA, not an agreement with the buyer. Uh, to hear councilmembers Zulawaga's entire statement, you can view the YouTube recording of the meeting. It starts at uh four hours and thirty minutes. That's one. And the second one is uh, councilmember Zulawaga asked Mr. Waggoner. Uh, if Tava House Properties, uh, of Tava House Properties, if the uses of phases two and three are subject to change from commercial. Mr. Wagner stated that they are not subject to change and will be commercial uses. This is significant because it directly contradicts the language adopted by council in the newly amended Plan of Development. And the timestamp is also there, timestamp three hours and thirty-seven minutes.
Okay, so there's, there's three things happening here. One, the clerk is jo- her job is to just take action minutes. So that's abbreviations and not verbatim notes of these meetings. So she doesn't typically write verbatim what we say with someone. Second, uh, council can make a motion to amend the minutes uh and vote. Um. And third, we didn't see any of that in the agenda, so this is just being brought to us.
Well, they can, these notes can get set back and reviewed, that's fine. Um. I'm, you know, if you want to table it, but Suzanne asked me to uh, when we had our weekly meeting. Uh, what changes I saw, because I saw that they didn't reflect, the record did not reflect. Uh, what were the primary concerns that I was bringing to the table? And I just want them on the record and that just very simply states what they are.
Sure, and we also, you know, we have our recordings and.
Well, and it gives that reference, so.
Okay, so then we either need a motion, well, we need a motion to amend the, the minutes then.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to table.
Them separately? Yeah, we have two sets. Can we, can we start with maybe April sixth? And then do the April twentieth, because there's two sets.
Sure.
So maybe one can get.
So this is for the twen-
Sure, and then Councilmember Neil, what was your question?
I'd like to make a motion to table. The council meeting minutes vote until we have had a chance to review your concern and I want to review the tape. We don't typically uh capture verbatim, so I just want to see what the intent was and what was said. I don't want to just automatically amend it without reviewing it.
Okay, well.
Is that fair?
That's fine.
Well, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the April sixth meeting minutes. As written.
Second.
Okay.
Case?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Nikai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Harvey? Thank you, Labar.
I, I think there needs to be clarification.
This is not the one we're talking about. This is the first one.
Okay.
There's two sets of minutes.
Okay.
And she asked us to separate, yeah.
Very good. Councilmember Nikai asked for approval for the April six, six.
Correct.
Very good.
Labar, yes, thank you. Motion carries six zero. I understand why you're abstaining, ma'am.
I'd just like to comment that um. Our minutes, according to our policies and procedures, are action minutes.
Right.
And there's a reason for that. And, and because when we, when our clerk writes verbatim minutes. There's an opportunity for her, not any fault of her own, to possibly um. Interpret something that may be interpreted differently by different people. And that's why we keep the video and audio record. So that if someone wants to listen to the testimony on a particular item, they can visit those videos. And, and I, I know that it's available. I know in the past we had some issues with missing some, but we don't, we resolved that problem. So anyone that would like to hear verbatim what was said by anyone in the item can visit those. Recordings and hear that. I don't think any of that belongs in the minutes. I mean, the minutes as written are acceptable. Just for those reasons.
The minutes need to reflect accurately the con- the, the, what happened. And uh, the comments that I made are specific to the actions that we took. The actions are, are done, they're a done deal. Those are the record of the, the significant, uh, the only two significant areas that I want to see in the record. I had many questions. Uh, many of my colleagues didn't have questions and I think it's important for the community to have that at their, uh, in the record, so.
And it is in the verb, in the video and audio record.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Um, if you do decide to do a motion to table, I would ask that could we table it to a later meeting than the next one? I'm not going to be present at the next meeting. I don't know. June fifteenth, could we table the minutes to June fifteenth if that, if council desires?
Yeah, let me.
The majority.
My motion then.
And what was that, sir?
I, I will amend my motion to table the April twentieth, twenty twenty-three regular city council meeting minutes vote until.
June fifteenth.
June fifteenth.
I'll second.
Connors?
Yes.
Nikai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
No.
Case?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries five to two with Labar and case voting no.
Okay. We are off to item number six, which is public comment on items not on the agenda. And Suzanne will let us know if people signed up.
We do, ma'am. Our first speaker this evening, and I, I do have to apologize.
It's okay.
Our timer's not working.
Okay.
Our civic clerk's not working.
That's okay.
That's why, that's all you're seeing up there. Um, Grace has put in a ticket, maybe it'll get resolved during, during the meeting, but we'll see.
That's fine. I always write down the time the speakers start anyways and.
Okay, so city manager.
Oh, look at you guys.
It's not civic clerk, but that's perfect. Okay, so, so what we do is we wait till they get to the microphone, Mr. Eric Cracker. We wait till they get to the back of the microphone. Okay. So the first speaker is Aaron Hillstrom.
How long's my time?
Three minutes and they have a clock running off.
Thank you very much. Our rise tonight to talk on behalf of the school board and the comments in the paper as well as in the recent meetings. I'd like to talk about Merit Academy specifically. And in the, this meeting, we talked about the taxing. When we look at the schools, and this is off of our Colorado Department of Education. A charter school in Colorado is a public school that is tuition free and open to all students. It operates under a charter or contract between the school and, in our case, the Board of Education. And it has a semi-autonomous public school of choice. Charter schools generally has more flexibility than traditional public schools as regards to curriculum and fiscal management. In exchange for flexibility, the charter school is bound by contract to be held accountable for meeting the performance-based objectives specific in the charter, which Merit is doing. They receive state funding based on per pu- per pupil operating revenue, hundred percent. House Bill seventeen thirteen seventy-five was signed into law June second, twenty seventeen and requires school districts to distribute funding they receive from local property tax and middle levy overrides. Now, these parents of which I'm one, we're paying taxes in this local community and we don't want to give them to Merit Academy. Yet parents have a choice to send their children there. These are tax dollars that they deserve and they should have, and I don't think that the student should pay for it. If we want to have better oversight, then that's what we have a Board of Education for. And I think ha- being held accountable to their achievements, which they are doing well, is uh necessary. Now, when we talk about enrollment, I, I just don't understand this argument of Merit Academy. It's because Merit Academy is in the district at a enrollment shop, but it's not really uh increased. For over ten years, we have declined in enrollment. Since this board and with this charter school, by CDE, we are fifteen percent increase in enrollment. That's facts. And yet we're attacking the board as if they're doing bad, as if we're not doing the right thing. The previous boards failed. Plain and simple. When they chose to operate unanimously and uh step on our constitutional rights, our First Amendment rights as parents. That's when they got voted out. This board, if they operate in the same, will be voted out. But to put conjecture out there and to uh. Increase the rhetoric. This is lunacy. Look at the facts. We are failing our children. The benchmarks, I'm on the deck and I'm on the sack. And I can tell you personally, our benchmarks aren't where they should be. Our sixth and seventh graders, sixty percent failing in reading and math. That's not acceptable. So if we need to have charter schools so that parents can have a choice to send their kids to a better education rather than a failing system, then that's what we should do. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker, next speaker is Deanne Betterman.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Um, I'm Deanne Betterman and I've lived here for about twenty-one years. Ms. Harvey suggested that the city council should take a hard look at the small portion of sales tax that directly funds public education in Woodland Park. Her complaint is that Woodland Park School District divides the revenue amongst all district schools. It should hardly be objectionable that tax revenue passed by voters for the funding of school is being used to fund each district school. Proportional to the size and population of the school. After all, Ms. Harvey does not suggest that the money's being used improperly or unlawfully. For any unlawful purpose. When you get down to it, her objection seems to be that the students at Merit Academy, a public charter school. Are not being arbitrarily excluded from their share of sale tax. What could possibly be the basis for denying a public school like Merit Academy? A fair share of tax revenue, revenue, revenue designed to fund schools is not something Ms. Harvey was very clear about. What is clear is that Ms. Harvey does not like Merit Academy and doesn't want it treated like a Woodland Park public school. This is not new. When she interviewed for an appointment to the Woodland Park School Board the summer of twenty-two, she made it clear that she disagreed with the chartered Merit Academy. The school board didn't choose her and now it appears that she would make it difficult for those who rely on Woodland Park School District for education. Or employment in her campaign against Merit Academy and the school board. The reality is eliminating the sales tax for education would have a dramatic negative impact on education. And a dramatic negative impact on all of our kids, not just the ones at Merit. Why should they be denied a share of the public education funding? Because their parents, who are taxpayers, exercise their legal right to a school of their choice. Like it or not, Merit Academy is a public school. And the children going there are receiving a public education and it should be funded by public dollars, just like any other public schools. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Linda Barton? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Nate Owen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro temp and City Council for your, for listening to us this evening. Um, I'm here to uh actually thank you and congratulate you on uh bringing the attention to, to mental health, health awareness month for the month of May. And I really wanted to say my thanks and appreciation for that. Um, I am both a parent and a teacher at the Woodland Park School District. Uh, my name is Nate Owen. Um, as many of you are aware, there's several changes that are happening constantly in our school district. And tonight I'd like to speak a little bit firsthand on some of the important things that's happening in our school district that are related to the health of our students. And how that supports of the development of our students to become successful citizens. We don't separate a child's physical health and their mental health because health is health. When children are supported in their health, they are ready to learn and grow with their peers. We have been working very hard in our district to make sure that the kids are ready to learn. It takes a village to raise a child. The school is just one part of this community. I'll tell you that my child's teacher, I've got two, two children in the school district currently and two more that are on their way. Um, their, their, my child's teachers and their support staff in this district are part of that village for my children. I'm a part of that village for my students. And there's many teachers in our school district that are a part of that village for their students and they show them love on a continual basis. I want to share a few stories about some of the wonderful things that are going on in our school. For instance, my son, um, at the beginning of the school year, he has autism and was classified as non-verbal. Since working with his school community and working through his mental wellness with the class and his uh support staff, he has now become. Uh, emerging verbal and the class has become more accepting of his speech delays. Yesterday, and so this is a little bit more personal, yesterday, his teacher called me after school and shared with me a, a super success story. And I wanted to share that with you guys. My son got brave and stood up in front of the schoolwide assembly and put his hand up. And the speaker called on my son and he was able to verbalize a question and he was understood to this guest speaker. It was wonderful and my, my pride as a dad and my wife are so proud of my son. Um, another story, I was talking with another parent at a, uh, at something the other day. Um, she wanted to sh- me to share with you about her daughter Ellie. She's in kindergarten this year. Um, she's six years old. In the typical conversation, um, the Ellie came home from school and, and uh the mom says, hey, how was your day today? And Ellie, a six-year-old in kindergarten, said, mommy, today I got to learn how to be a better friend today. And that. That is something that some adults struggle with. I'll tell you that I know that I was not able to verbalize that until I had grown and become more of an adult. And here we are teaching six-year-olds in kindergarten how to be better friends. My daughter at the middle school is in sixth grade. She comes home and she tells me about some of the things that she's learning in one of her classes. She's doing a unit right now about how to gracefully receive. In the unit called Attitude of Gratitude. And she's able to come home and verbalize how she's learning about how to give back to her community and receive that thanks when she gets there in a respectful and humble way. Many mental health screeners are going to be discontinued next year. Imagine some of the students that are not able to outwardly show their challenges with peer relationships, or they might have some isolation or have a perception of being bullied. Outcomes for students that feel targeted and isolated or just disconnected from their community are bleak at best. We heard that earlier tonight. Health screenings allow for students to share their perspective. With trusted adults, trusted adults, teachers, the counselors, the administrators can use some of this data for strategic grouping. Their peer relationship building and additional proactive interventions to better the community of the classrooms in our schools.
Mr. Owens, I don't mean to be rude, but your time is up, so.
I apologize. Can I?
Okay.
I've got a couple more.
Your final, final wrap up.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm concerned about the shift in our district away uh providing mental health support ser- services. Um, for example, I am having trouble understanding how issuing a proclamation against mental health screeners is supportive or helpful for our students. Um, students without these mental health opportunities and these services are not going to perform well academically in the classrooms. Because in order to grow academically, all of the students' needs need to be met. Um, I want to leave you guys with a quote uh from The Lion King. I was watching this with my son the other day and this just really spoke to me. Um, Mufasa, the father, was speaking to his son Simba and he said. There's more to being king than getting your way all the time. You see Simba. there's more to being king than getting your way all the time. You see Simba, everything you see exists together in a delicate balance. And as king, you will need to understand that balance and respect all the creatures, from the crawling ant to the leaping antelope. And that speaks to me tonight because I feel like the students need that mental support, mental health service support that we can provide for them. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chris Austin.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Chris Austin and I come to you tonight as your neighbor, actually. For the past 25 and a half years, I have pastored Imaeus Fellowship at 205 North Pine Street, just across to our shared parking lot. And as your neighbor, I want to thank you for doing your part to heighten our awareness by recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Over the years, I have worked with students and adults alike and I have placed a great emphasis on cultivating healthy community. And I've discovered that the way forward in this endeavor is to invest in the health and the wellbeing of individuals within our community. The past eight years of my work has been focused on integrating a blend of pastoral care that intends to address all aspects of life, including mental health. Seems to me that when the soul of an individual thrives, they have greater capacity to contribute to a healthy community. It's with this in mind that I am currently on the Teller County Mental Health Alliance Interfaith Task Force. From my perspective, the magic ingredient of our community has always been collaboration. And by that I mean a very intentional effort to put, let's say, the efforts on the part of the school district and communities of faith and local law enforcement, scouting programs, city parks and rec, community partnerships, all working together to form a network of care that may be direct care and it may be indirect care. And when I think of collaboration, I think of programs and initiatives that are funded by a variety of sources, by taxpayer dollars, by grant funding, by the generous financial contributions of individuals and organizations. And regardless of the funding source, it has always been my experience that the citizens of Woodland Park have, have been welcome to participate in this collaborative culture. Your decision to recognize May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Woodland Park is well timed. As you are aware, the recent decisions on the part of the Woodland Park School Board and the district's interim superintendent to refuse over a million dollars in annual grant funding that for years, even before a global pandemic, supported the mental health of students and their families. These non-taxpayer dollars have helped reinforce this collaborative network of care. Not simply within our schools, but throughout the complex textures of our city and our region. And while I do recognize their authority to make such decisions, I'm afraid this will prove a huge misstep in leadership. The ripples of their decisions impact us all. It is my hope that we will always remember the power of collaboration. That we will find ways to shore up this tremendous loss of participation on the part of the current directorship of the Woodland Park School District. And that we will grow in our awareness and our compassion towards our fellow citizens who face, face mental health challenges. Again, thank you for being a part here tonight and recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Woodland Park. And lastly, I want to thank you for being good neighbors over all these decades.
Thank you.
And Mike Nakai.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Mike Nakai, Woodland Park. I'm here tonight to announce that after last year's success, we are again having wildfire prep day. This will be on May 20th from nine to noon at the Netco Fire Station. A lot of the same things will be available for the citizens to learn about mitigation. Landscaping, you'll be able to sign up for peak alerts where you can get notifications on your cell phone about emergencies. You will be able to sign up for a free voluntary and confidential inspection of your property by Netco personnel. They will come and look at it and give you recommendations on, on what you might do. You can check your phone to see if it has been disabled. There's a setting that prevents it from getting these alerts. So this happened quite a bit in the 403 fire. People were in the evac zone and didn't get alerts because their phone setting just wasn't right. So they'll help you get that fixed. New this year will be a pine needle drop off so you can bag up some needles and drop them off.
Oh, great.
Apparently that's a big hit. So yeah, Teller County Waste has donated a dumpster for that and and so the chief wanted me to, to let you know that, that it's not necessary to rake the needles off of your entire property. Just what we call zone one. So maybe the first 10, 15 feet around your home, off your deck, off your roof, off your gutters. Okay. But certainly you don't need to rake the entire forest for us. And good news for you, Robert, I'm not here asking for any funding this year.
And I'm excited that you're doing it.
And there's, there, the Netco has decided to cover this cost themselves this year. And so they, again, well, I think Kristen is going to be helping us get the word out. Grace did a great job with that last year. And so I, I think you guys will help a lot partnering us getting the word out. Since since this is items not on the gym, not sure whether I'll be able to speak on later. I wanted to remind you that last year when I came to ask for funding the first time, it was a tie vote. And because I believe the mayor was out of the country. And so automatically it was tabled to the next meeting. And so I came back and was the, was granted the funding. So I'd like you to consider that when you get to this item later on the agenda in your deliberations on your council rules changes. Okay, thank you.
Mike, can you just real quick mention the date and location again?
Yeah, so the date is May 20th, 9:00 AM to noon at the Netco Fire Station on Evergreen.
Thank you. Do you have a website or anything available? A website or anything?
There's not, well, you could not, we, there's not a website for the event. You can go to the, Netco has their own Facebook page.
Okay, great.
The city's already put it on the, on the scroll.
Excellent.
And the banner is going to be going out over social media. I believe Deb's going to put it in her packet. You know, so we, we did a, they, you know, that we did a good job of getting the word out last year and it was hugely successful. And I think that's why the Netco wants to do it again.
Great, thank you, Mike.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes the public comment. Items not on the agenda. I just wanted to let council know that our social media world, we have about 40 people in addition to the people in the audience listening to the meeting this evening between Zoom and Facebook Live.
No one on, no one on Zoom for public comment?
No.
Okay. We have no item seven and we are off to item number eight. Ordinance is on initial posting. We have eight A, consider ordinance number 1450, series 2023, an ordinance for the city of Woodland Park approving an amendment to a conditional use permit and site plan. And our presenter is Karen.
Good evening. This is a quasi judicial item. And it actually went through a prior approval fairly recently in 2021. Council approved ordinance number 1409, series 2021. That authorized a conditional use permit and site plan review for a multifamily residential development that consisted of a combination of apartments and townhomes on lot six and seven, the Tamarack Tech Park filing number five. This prior proposal included 112 apartments and 20 townhomes for a total of 132 dwelling units. On lot six and then 35 townhome dwelling units on lot seven. The request that we were asking for you to set a hearing for is to amend that conditional use permit and site plan review for only lot six. And this revises both the type of dwelling units and includes, it was a reduction in units, the type of units and there's associated changes to the site plan. So with that, the request this evening is for council to approve on initial posting, ordinance number 1450, series 2023, an ordinance approving an amendment to a conditional use permit and site plan for apartment buildings on a single lot as a use located on Tamarack Tech Parkway with a legal description of lot six, Tamarack Tech Park filing number five, within the multifamily residential urban zone district and set the public hearing for May 18th, 2023.
Okay, council is just initial posting to get it to public hearing. So can I get a motion, please?
I'll move to approve ordinance 1450, series 2023 on initial posting as presented and set the public hearing for May 18th, 2023.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
He's taken a break.
Hey, Harvey?
Yes, but I will ask for the attorney to determine if I should recuse myself when it comes to the public hearing.
Yes, you should. It's quasi judicial. Thank you.
Labar?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Okay. We are off to item B. That is ordinance 1449 on initial posting. And we have Venus presenting.
So I know, I'll give a brief introduction for this one, council. Last year, we had the High Park Fire elsewhere in Teller County. We, we realized that we were kind of a difficult position with bringing the council together for an emergency declaration. I was in a different part of the country and as it was a weekend, I, I don't know where all of you were, but I was in Arkansas.
I was in Dallas.
You were in Dallas. And it was, we were asked to very quickly convene the council to do an emergency declaration to assist the county and to provide resources of, to the county and other agencies if necessary. So that was a difficult thing. It took us, I think, more than 24 hours to get that meeting put together. Out of that, the city attorney and I, the following month, as we've actually not done anything with this for almost a year now, but with wildfire season coming, we thought the timing was, was useful. We wanted to make sure that we could quickly declare an emergency declaration mainly to protect the city in a financial sense. If we respond to an emergency immediately, if something really bad happens, fire starts right out there. We, we will be on the hook, chances are, for a lot of those expenses. Or if we have an emergency declaration that allows us to qualify for federal and state funding in a lot of circumstances. It also allows the city, this ordinance allows the city to take immediate steps to protect public safety in the event of wildfire riot or any other number of unpleasant things. We can act more quickly. What this does, this gives a city manager seven, up to seven days to make that emergency declaration. The idea is to convene the council as soon as possible, hopefully the same day. But to be able to take immediate action if necessary, instead of like last year, have no wait for the council to get convened. So that in mind, that is the ordinance.
And I'd just like to remind council, this is initial posting to move to public hearing.
It is. I have some comments I'd like to make before this even hits the vote to take it. Declaring an emergency is a very serious matter for any municipality, city, any government instrumentality. In Teller County, of course, that goes to the, the three commissioners. It concerns me that that is a, is a responsibility of your elected officials, not of your employees. And it simply requires us putting into place from the sheriff's office through the police department to have a text blast, phone blast to have convened that. To base this on, on an event when you were even in town, I find, I find problematic. Because what we're saying here is we're creating an ordinance to say, oh, it's okay, we're going to give the authority to our employee to make a decision for us. And that's just, to me, it's out of context of how we should run a city. We should run the city, the, your elected officials are responsible to you. The buck stops with them in terms of taking away your liberties. And I acknowledge the fact it's important to have systems in place, but I don't think we need an ordinance to do that. I think we can simply put some protocols in place to convene council. Ideally, this is a responsibility of the mayor's. And her responsibility then to communicate with us to determine that this is res, rises to the level of an emergency for the community. So I'm very resistant to create an ordinance, which is a law, to delegate our responsibility to a city employee. As excellent as Michael is, it's still our responsibility, in my opinion. Michael may not always be our city manager.
So it's my understanding that it's only for seven days. Council at the end still makes the final decision.
Correct.
So you take away my freedom for seven days?
It's up to seven days. It's if we're not, if, if we're a lot here and Michael's the only one here.
And but he wasn't here. He was out of town.
Well, he was available, but if, if we can't get a quorum together for seven days or six days and we need to declare an emergency so that we don't get stuck for paying the bill, I don't have a problem giving him seven days leeway and we can decide.
Well, you, you know, fire pretty well. The, the way the delegated authority goes with a fire, it starts with the sheriff. And the sheriff works with the different fire departments. And when he feels that it gets to a level of needing to rise, he brings in the state. That's really actually on a county level. So we're part of the county. I, I, and I might be wrong in my understanding of this.
You are. You're wrong. You're wrong.
Okay.
You didn't look at my bio, obviously. But that's a point of information. This is an initial posting and I don't think.
And I'm suggesting, I don't want it to come up as an ordinance at all. I'm, I'm suggesting it to get killed from the, from the start. That's why I'm talking, that's why I'm speaking.
Well, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion then to approve this on initial posting. Sure, Rusty, I see you have a.
Well, I'll second. I would like to just provide a comment because it is initial posting. I'll go ahead and second it to move it forward. But I do want to make the other council members aware. This is, Robert and I don't agree on very many things, but I happen to agree to an extent. And that's why I think we should be prepared for some dialogue. I believe emergency declarations belong with the mayor. I always have. Just, just my.
Sure. And just to clarify that real quick, in our charter, I don't have that authority. I am a volunteer and I am not on call 24/7. So if I am at home, I don't have to answer my phone and I don't typically answer my phone. And I'm also not the first line of contact in an emergency. Michael has and has always been.
I understand why I'm just pointing out.
So there would need to be a bunch of different ordinances enacted for that to happen. And part of that would be a strong mayor responsibility, which we don't have in this home role community as mayor. Is council manager, management. So I just wanted that clarified because the audience doesn't know that's not my position. That's not my role. The biggest authority I have is just running this meeting. That's it. Then we're all equal from there out. Oh, and I sign budgetary things, but that's it.
Yeah.
So since this is initial posting, we can have that discussion during the public hearing. Let's go ahead and let Suzanne call the vote.
For the record, ma'am, I just need to correct. Sir, I heard council member Case, Mayor Pro Tem Case gave it the second, so.
That, that is fine.
Okay.
I wanted to do that so that we could have further discussion.
Further discussion, yes.
And let you speak.
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes six one with Zuluaga voting no.
All right, we are off to item. All right, we are off to item number nine, public hearings. And we have nine A.
Thank you, Mayor Labar. I, um, need to ask for permission from council to continue. This public hearing for judges for some more administrative work that needs to be done.
Sure. Counsel, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to.
Yeah, excuse me, um, to date, uh, May.
Eighteenth.
Thank you, May eighteen.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing for the approval of a change of location. For shady Inc. DBA judges. To May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Thank you. Zuluaga?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we're off to item B, which is approval of modification of a hotel restaurant liquor license for Thai Good Eats. And Suzanne is also the presenter.
Thank you. So the first ordinance that we tabled is for judges who is moving. To the stuffed food emporium, the old stuffed food emporium building. Once we get that liquor license taken care of, but they're moving there. So as a result of them moving there. Good Thai eats, which is a neighbor of judges, is interested in taking over the entire judges' space. So currently, Good Thai eats just has that one portion of the building licensed. So in order for them to move in and serve liquor into judges, we just have to change their liquor license. It's just a modification of premises to allow them to take over the space. They made application as needed. The applicant is, um, Danielle Bowers. They have current sales tax license, business license. A petition of needs and desires is not necessary for them to do this because this location already had a liquor license. The location is eligible to license, be licensed. And the Bowers possess a lease documented to us with expiration date of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So we require a lease for one year and they have, um, proof of that. They submitted their application to our office on April twenty-fourth. The property was posted as well on April twenty-fourth. Public notice was put on the website April twenty-fourth. And the character of these applicants are not an issue for this hearing. All applicable fees have been paid and Mr. Bowers is with us this evening. I'd like to invite him to the podium so he can tell you some of the exciting things he plans on doing there.
Suzanne, you said the contract was five thirty-one, twenty-three, or is it twenty-four? You said it had to be a year contract.
Twenty-four.
It is twenty-four.
Mayor, council, hello. Uh, I was hoping Danielle was gonna be here, but I guess she got busy. Um, I am a biker. I do not cook meth in my wife's restaurant.
I think you better explain that.
Right. I thought it was funny at first and then my mom called me. Whole another story. We, yes, we had a lot of difficulties on, uh, with some issues that we had opening the original restaurant. And I don't give up on anything. We're not giving up on that side, especially with all the money we invested. Which is terrible, but, uh, Mr. Z knows. Once again, I wish Danielle was here because she had a whole list. But, um. Thai Good Eats is gonna take over judges and it's gonna be more of a family restaurant. She will have. You know, wine and beer. I don't think she's gonna be shaking margaritas or anything. It's gonna be more of a. Subtle Thai family restaurant. Other than that. I really wanna get the other side open to bring more food to Widen Park. I'm talking, um, some Middle Eastern food. Some Indian food. That'll be authentic, I promise. We need more food. We definitely need more food. Uh, other than that, I, I don't know what else to say. I love Widen Park. I love Teller County. And I love all the people here.
We love your wife's food.
Yeah.
That's about it.
So where did you move the meth lab to?
I had to put it back in Reseda, California. They've been following me for weeks now.
Sorry, Chris. I was trying to get the location for you.
It's, I want to explain why you.
Oh, I thought everybody saw the paper.
Oh, yeah, it's a joke.
Do it every year. But a lot of people were calling in the restaurant or bar. And asking if Danielle needed help with anything since Rick was locked up. It's, it's, I think it's. In a sick way, I think it's hilarious. It was supposed to be a joke. They've been doing this for thirty-six years. And even the people that have been here twenty years thought it was real. I thought that was amazing.
I, I. Energy establishment and, uh, other council members have called me and said. And I said, well, the police already have our pictures going in and out of the place.
One guy made a comment on Facebook. He said, yeah, I had that tat tie or the chicken satay and I couldn't sleep for two days. I appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I, I do have one quick question. So you're gonna have all three?
Yes, ma'am. One zero two to one zero eight.
Okay, all right. Thanks. Excellent.
Okay.
Very good. Counsel, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Or is there, do you have anyone signed up for?
There is no public comment. Thank you for asking.
That was in April.
Right?
I make a motion to approve, um, the Thai restaurant taking over judges. As proposed in. In.
Nine B.
What, what is it, fourteen? Approval of modification of hotel and liquor license. Uh, good ones located at one oh two to one oh four Midland Avenue.
I'll second. But there, some, the confusion was, is that article was written on and published on the twenty-eighth of March, not April Fool's.
That's right.
But it was called Crackpot.
Oh, Mountain Crackpot.
It was called, that edition was.
Yes.
Thank you. Labar?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right, we have nine C, which is approval of ordinance fourteen forty-eight, series twenty twenty-three, and we have Aaron present. No, Aaron's not here.
No, we don't.
Just. It's all you, Michael.
The bag man.
Bag man's not here.
Aaron the night off as it's, uh, his son's birthday, so.
He bagged out.
Welcome, Carol.
Counsel, this is a, this is a supplemental to replace our hockey rink. As Aaron shared at the last meeting. Uh, there was, what was determined to be a wind event that knocked over a good portion of our hockey boards. And, uh, Sursa, our insurance carrier came in and assessed that, uh, we should be replacing the entire set. And so we are simply appropriating the money that Sursa has paid to us. Plus a, a few thousand dollars more to do an upgrade, as I understand. Anybody can correct me if I'm wrong. And, uh. Something like that, yes. I appreciate that. And so this is, uh. This is so we need a new hockey rink.
Counsel, any questions?
Can I make a motion to?
Well, no, no.
We have to have public hearing. There is no one signed up, but we have to.
Sorry about that, Suzanne.
Just when I remember.
I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen forty-eight, series twenty twenty-three, adjusting expenditure appropriations. As presented.
I'll second.
Puck that.
Labar?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
And Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Very good. Uh, it's not nine o'clock yet. So, um, moving on to item ten, new business. We've got ten A, approval of resolution nine oh three. Codifying the city council rules and procedures, and we're gonna let our city manager. Present that.
Trying to figure out how I drew so many short straws in one night. Um, council, this is the, the recurrence. Uh, we're bringing back after it was tabled, uh, from last meeting. The council rules and procedures. This is something that we talked about a couple of times earlier this year at various work sessions. And, uh, the revised rules and procedures are in your council packet. There, there were a number of changes. I'm not gonna summarize them here. I know there was a, a little bit of dialogue about one item in particular. And that was the, the suggested revised start times of the meetings. Uh, these regular council meetings. Currently, they stand at seven. The revised rules, uh, on your, y'all's consensus was six P M sharp. Um, I know some folks would like it to start a little bit later. But beyond that, uh, I, oh, there was also, uh, council member Nakai, I think, had. Uh, perhaps wanted to look at the Thai vote. Item, um, whether something on a three-three Thai vote either automatically returns on the next council meeting. Or if the vote simply dies, uh, as I believe is captured in the revised rules and procedures. So. This is a resolution. Uh, it will not, uh, have a second reading.
Okay, so for the start time then, um. We would need to make a motion to amend. And then council member Nakai, you would have to let us know what your recommendation is. And then we'd have to make a motion to amend for that as well.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm fine with leaving the Thai vote because it seems that I just read it black and white, but you guys said we could table it. We could choose to table it or two council members could. Bring it back.
Yeah.
When there's, so I'm fine with the way that's written. So the only thing I have is, as I've said before, I would prefer, I, I actually like the seven P M. Start time, but I'd be perfectly comfortable with six thirty. I think six is just a little harder for. Citizens and I like the six thirty because it lines up with planning commission and B O A. So we're all just on the same. Page for the start time, which I think is easier for everybody to remember.
Okay.
That's the only, that was the only thing I had.
Sure. So for the start time, we'd need a motion to amend that from, for our rules.
I'll make a motion to amend the, the regular meeting start time to six thirty P M.
I'll second that.
Case?
No.
Connors?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries five-two with Case and Labar voting no. Okay, so. Uh, for the audience. Just so the audience knows, the next council meeting then. Oh, we started at six thirty.
Oh, okay.
The assumption we approve of this.
Yeah. So as we're, um, looking at changes in it, if you go to page fifty-four C. Uh, we have a, uh, ordinance that we're not even on initial, or we've just put onto initial posting. But C says, the city manager or the city council's discretion, the mayor shall declare manage and in. Uh, and officially declared a local, local emergency. And that conflicts with two point one, six point zero three zero, the decl- declaration of emergency. And that then, uh, gives the city manager, the, uh, it says the city manager may declare a local emergency. When the city manager determines that there is a reasonable cause to believe that the city. Uh, or any part of the city is suffering from or is in imminent danger of suffering from a local emergency. So it says we've got the cart before the.
Robert, what page in the page fifty-four? That's, that's the emergency. What page in the, um, rules and procedure?
I have highlights. I'm just following my highlights. You're right. I apologize. So it's.
Yeah, that's not.
We go to the next part. What, what, what's the page? Does it start on?
Well, it's up at seventy-ish.
Seventy.
Red line starts, we're around seventy-two-ish on, uh, page seventy-two.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, the part I had in this one, thanks, is under G, and that's page seventy-three and seventy-four. And it seems confusing to me, having just walked through this last council meeting. Confidentiality also covers information. Uh, provided to council members outside of executive sessions. Now confidentiality, everything in this section is about executive. Uh, executive session and it has this. Uh, out of context paragraph that says confidentiality also covers information provided to council outside of executive sessions. Oh, stop it. Um, outside of executive sessions. Where the information is exempt from disclosure under law. So, um, what would that be where it is not executive session and you would not disclose it to? Uh, not be, um. Able to be a core request. A decision to breach confidentiality or to waive a privilege such as. Attorney-client privilege shall only be made by the council acting as a whole whenever the confidential requirement on the privilege. Applies to the city as a whole or to the council as a whole. Any council members who individually breaches such confidentiality or who purports to waive such a privilege. Will be considered to be acting outside of the performance of the council's authority. So this is like. I specifically last week shared attorney-client privilege. Because it specifically addressed me and it was sent to all of council and to the city employees. So for me, this is, um. You're violating my right to, to have this type of clause in here is nuts. It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not consistent to me with what an executive session is. And an executive session. Uh, generally, it would be something like we'd be talking about one of the city employees or some legal matter that the city's involved in. And that's very specifically, it would be a breach of confidentiality to share any of that. And that's absolutely understood. But the way this goes into this general information, I find, um. Should be struck.
Can I speak to the attorney-client privilege?
Yeah.
Um, it's very important. Um, you all hold that on behalf of the city. So if I or the one of the attorneys gives, um, shares. Um, attorney-client communication that we say is, is privileged, that is, um, sanctisac, that needs to be kept. By the entire council on behalf of the city because, um, there's many reasons for why we're giving, uh, legal advice. Um, so it's just, this is just to make clear that one person can't waive that because if one person does waive it, then there's no. Privilege and then anything, any other confidential information that we may have shared within that same communication. Um, possibly could be viewed as being waived and it's not for one person, um, to, to waive that. So I think that's, I mean, I'm not saying this can't be wordsmithed better, but, um. Attorney-client privilege is very important that you all hold it on behalf of the people in the city, not just on behalf of yourselves.
Well, and that includes staff. Staff is part of the client. Um, the client is the city of Widen Park, including the citizens, the staff and the captain. And another, another example, Nina, that I thought of too, is, um. Um, when we're. It's work product. Something that is in the midst of being prepared, work product is not subject to Cora either. Um, the staff has a work product or the council has a work product. When that's completed and then presented publicly, then it becomes part of the public record. So that's another example of what I can think of that would be outside of executive session.
For exempt, yeah. I mean, this is, I agree that the council member that this written weird because it starts with executive session, then it talks about. Attorney-client privilege as a whole, and then it talks about following an executive session. But there are times where attorneys will give that privileged, um, have that privileged communication where it's, we're outside of the executive session. That's the only part I want to talk about.
Is there a way you could wordsmith it so that it is, uh? It takes into consideration what I'm saying. It's clearer and. And it does as council member Case says about, uh, there is sort of work product.
You, well, the work product is the exempt under law, from disclosure under law. But the part that you're speaking to, um, Councilor Zuluaga is. If you do waive the privilege, you are acting outside the performance. Of your authority as a council member because you have to, you're, you, you should hold that on behalf of the entire council and the city.
I, I don't think that's accurate from the standpoint of the fact that, uh, your firm took a shot specifically at one council member. To all the councilors, didn't bother to share that privately with the one council member to seek that that was okay to share with others. So in my opinion, you violated my freedoms clearly. And I, I would never a- agree to such a, to such a, to allow you to just have a shot. Um, from your opinion. And I get it, you know, you're a smart, you're an attorney, uh, you've been to school, you've done all that stuff, but I, there, there's First Amendment rights. That council preserves and, and, uh.
Um, so I. Before he wrote that letter, he gave that courtesy. Before he wrote that letter, he gave that courtesy, but, um, you, you, you are, you. Uh, it's up to everyone else if they want to take away this, um, sentence. It's, it's the fact, whether it's the fact or not, um, but, um. You're acting outside that your authority as a council member by doing that. I mean, it doesn't, it, this sentence is not necessary for that fact to. Be the fact, so you could always make a motion to amend.
Can I just make a simple suggestion? Can we rather than have it come under I? Can we just make our one? Can we just make one, two, three, make that second sentence its own standalone sentence? Make it its own separate paragraph? I mean, with that, Nina, I mean, Nina with that.
Needle will do whatever we.
I know, I know.
Doesn't change the law or nor does removing this sentence.
Yeah, but that way it's just one, two, three. It's not one with a caveat and then two. Then there's.
It's a separate paragraph.
Paragraph and I think it cleans it up. To wordsmith it.
Yeah, and the way what.
But that's.
Council member Nakai is pointing out is the way you have not. Uh, lettered it as a sublettering, um, it does confuse the two paragraphs, uh, so that it. Could be interpreted, uh, incorrectly by clearly putting. An I for the first paragraph and a I, I for the second paragraph, it separates the two thoughts clearly. I don't have problems with.
It's fine. If you can make a motion to amend that clearly.
Okay, um, I'd make a motion to amend paragraph. I don't know the number on it. It's G, G.
It's number.
I. Entitled confidentiality so that the first paragraph carries the I. The second paragraph carries I, I, and the third paragraph be changed from I, I. To I, I, I. The eyes haven't.
Give Suzanne a second.
What is?
I have it. Okay. Suzanne, do you need any clarification?
No, I think, um, what I'm hearing is you would like to amend section four, paragraph G. One. If then you would, under confidentiality, the first paragraph. With the little I and the second one, make it two little I's. I got it.
Okay. I have it in my. But there is not a motion to amend the wording.
Correct. Motion to strike it completely.
No, I'll say. I'll second it.
So this is the motion presented by council member Neil. Council member Nakai seconded it.
On the numbering.
On the numbering.
Okay.
Changing the wording.
Council member Harvey.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if I could for just as clarification, are we going to go through these? Line by line?
No.
We will not be approving it in total or only as by exception.
We should be approving the rules in total because we've already gone through these line by line. That is how it should be. It's a good procedural question because technically you probably should have made a motion to approve and then the, and then these amendments.
Yeah.
Now we're.
It's only been a year.
Right.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Every five years, right? Yeah.
The rest of the documents. I will amend my motion to approve the rest of the document.
As written.
But you didn't make a motion.
I did.
Council member Neil made a motion.
I seconded.
Yeah, you see, right. Council member Neil made the motion.
Okay, so. Okay, I'd like to amend my motion to approve the remainder of the document. With the two. Changes proposed. And one of them already voted on as written.
And I'll second.
Okay, we ready, counsel? Okay, Connors?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carries six to one with Zulawaga voting no.
We don't have anyone signed up for that, do we? And we're on new business.
We do.
Okay.
We shouldn't have voted.
Pardon me? That was you. You'll wait for different. Okay, Mr. Penland had signed up for it. He's withdrawn, his sign up.
All right. All right, we're on ten B, resolution nine oh two, establishing ten multi-family residential water taps and. Kip Wiley is ready.
Much easier one, I promise, um. Uh, before you today is res- resolution nine oh two establishing the ten multi-family water taps, uh, for, um. The legal description in your packet, I'll just re- refer to it as address nine twenty Spruce Haven Drive across from Tractor Supply. Uh, this, uh, property was rezoned back in two thousand and one. Um, they are able to put seventeen units on this lot. They are only putting twelve and they are coming before you. Uh, because our water tap management plan says multi-family taps in a triplex or larger needs to be approved by city council. Um, there are a series of eleven criteria for this, uh, project. This meets all eleven with the exception of handicap. There will be no elevators. In these, uh, dwelling units. These dwelling units are approximately four bedrooms, two and a half baths with a two car garage. Uh, they will be, um. Let's see. Twelve units, like I said, oh, they're only requesting ten multi-family units. The reasoning for that is they've already applied for two. And our water tap management plan says, uh, builder can only get two taps a month. And therefore, uh, anytime an apartment is done or these multi-family projects, we have this. This other route for our taps. So the multi-family bank currently has thirty two taps in it. They, it'll, this, if approved, uh. These ten will come out of it, uh, leaving twenty two in there, um. Uh, pursuant to section thirteen point two, seven point zero, five, zero D. Uh, these, uh, tabs are requested on a project, right, project basis, uh, two, uh, two hundred dollars per tap is paid at the time of city council approval. Uh, we have that check just waiting for approval or not to cash it. Let's see. So before our recommendation tonight, approve resolution, resolution nine oh two, uh, approving the ten multi-family taps. What questions can I answer?
Counsel, any questions?
Just, just a comment that it looked like they were putting less, uh, units on the property than it could hold. Is that right?
Correct, yeah, they can put around seventeen, they're going with twelve, fourteen.
Counsel, can I, or is there anyone signed up for this, Suzanne?
No, ma'am. Then I'll make a motion to approve resolution nine oh two as written.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
Second.
Oh, thank you, sir. Connors?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zulawaga?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Counsel, it's nine o'clock. Do you feel like you can muscle through or do you need a break?
I'm fine.
All right, very good. Let's head on to item ten C, the approval of subdivision development agreement and our presenters are playing director Karen.
No.
I just. Good evening again. Um, this item was on your last agenda on April twentieth and it is, um. Seeking, uh, approval of a subdivision of development agreement for Stone Ridge subdivision filing number five. Um, the party to the agreement is subdivision LLC with the manager being Dana Duncan. Uh, when developing a subdivision, the developer has the option of either completing all of the infrastructure prior to having the plat recorded. Or in the event that they are still working on installation of all that infrastructure, uh, they enter into this type of development agreement. Uh, the agreement gets recorded concurrently with the plat. Uh, the reason for that is, um. Heaven forbid, um, the developer goes under. We want to make sure that there is adequate financial security available. Should the city have to go in and install the remainder of the infrastructure that they were not able to accomplish? That is exceptionally rare, but in terms of being good stewards, this is, um, the path that is provided. And, um, what is, is recommended in situations like this. Um, and part of the reason for that concern and why it's so critical is that once a subdivision plat is recorded. They are able to sell lots to other parties. So in that horrible event that, um, the developer's not able to accomplish. All of the infrastructure, you have a variety of property owners that think that they had won a lot with all of that infrastructure. So that's the reason for all of this. So, uh, what you have in front of you this evening is the city standard development agreement. Um, everything is in order there, uh, where we've had, um, a little bit of, uh, or taken a little bit more time. To work out is all of the costs associated with the infrastructure that's required. And, um, at the last meeting, uh, some of those numbers needed to be updated. Uh, the developer has since provided updates that we have required. Um, but there is, um, still a couple of utilities where numbers have not been provided and those are the, what we call the dry utilities. Like electric and gas and any type of communication. Per our, um, ordinance, the, those are considered required utilities. And, um, we do need to make sure that there is funding available, um, you know, as part of the, the financial guarantee. So, um, what we have for you this evening is, um, the standard subdivision that development agreement. And our recommendation is for council to approve that S D A as presented. However, exhibit A must be updated with cost estimates acceptable to the city for all required utilities. And the S D A and associated final plat are to be recorded concurrently after the financial guarantee is provided to the city.
Counsel, do you have questions?
Can we have the applicant come up? I just want to make sure he is comfortable with the qualification statement that you just read at the end.
Certainly. We, and just, um, just for clarification, um, you heard something similar a few weeks ago and that same qualification statement was, um. Associated with that particular approval.
Okay. Mr. Howes, if you'd like to come up to the podium, welcome to.
Good evening, Skip Howes, project manager for. Stone Ridge filing number five. Um. There are some issues where I'm going to be addressing tonight where. We disagree with some interpretations on staff on the code. Um, I'm in a bit of a conundrum. We've been trying to work on some of these issues for the last four to six months. Um, we presented some information to staff. Couple of weeks ago, uh, we've not gotten a formal response. So I want to go through with you to let you know what we're dealing with, where we are. Um. I know you've had some staff changes over the years and with those staff changes, you've a lot, a lot, lost a lot of historical knowledge with regards to the community. Um, there are still some staff members here that I've had the privilege of dealing with over the years and. I pride in myself over those years to be able to walk into city hall, talk with staff, tell me what we need to do and walk out with a clear understanding of what I need to do. And, um, I, I've lost that confidence. Um, so I'm going to give you an information. Uh, I'm sure that the city engineer will come up and countermand a bunch of it, but that's what the process is about. And, uh, the good news and bad news gang is you're the elected officials and you get to make the final hard decisions. So. The reason why we're doing this is the, the subdivision development agreement relates to the issues we have at hand. The three issues I'm going to be discussing with you are curb and gutter issue. Pavement design and the private sector improvements as they like to call the utilities are dry. The process we go through when we start a community improvement. Is the drawings are approved by the city engineer and we have a pre-construction conference for the beginning of the project and then every time we enter into a new phase. We have another review with either the city engineer or their city engineers designate. For the last number of years, that designate has always been the city construction inspector, whether it was Phil, it's now Sam. Um, so the city inspector or the city engineer's obligation for the code is to make regular inspections of the. Of the process as it's going on. And if he can't, obviously that designation goes to the. Construction inspector. So. We started back in September. Um, we've completed our water and sewer installation with the inspections being performed by the city construction inspector. We went through the processes of testing and all that kind of stuff and, and to the best of our knowledge, they were all accepted. We then go into the process of the curb and gutter installation. Excuse me. We, um, the process we go through is kind of extensive and I'd like to, it's a little bit technical, but. We have to get compaction tests of the area where the curb goes and then we do a proof roll where we bring in a big heavy truck that's weighted to a particular design. And that rolls up and down the curb with a very slow quarter of a mile an hour maybe or less. Observation with the city construction inspector to make sure that there's no movement or anything like that. If there is. We make repairs, we re-inspect, re-compact and go from there. So the process is a matter of observation, approval, observation, approval, observation and approval as we go along. Um. The curb and gutter that we install in new subdivisions is different than the curb and gutter you install in your repairs. In your repairs, you tear out a section, maybe twenty feet long, you hand form it and put it back in. We do slip forming. And what that means basically is there's a form that's attached to a machine. The concrete goes in the hopper and it forms it as it goes along in a continuous pour. So we can pour three, four, five, six, seven hundred feet at a time with the continuous movement. Of the concrete trucks. The beauty of that process over. The individual hand form stuff is you get a homogeneous section of concrete. That, that is stronger and, and, uh, less capable of being damaged if it's run into. So that's the process we used and that process is also typically a little bit more cost effective and affordable than the hand forming stuff. So the process we want, we go through is, as I said. We, uh, do the compaction test, we do the proof roll and then what they do is they set up a string line that follows the staking of the. Uh, by the engineer or based on the engineer and the survey. So you see this string along the edge of the road where the curb is going to go. So you can see if it's disjointed or disconnected and adjustments can be made in the field to raise that lower it, move it around. So you get a continuous good flow on the curb and the flow line to that. That's all done in conformance and, and in observation with the, uh, city construction inspector, the representative of the city engineer. Uh, our first day to give you an idea, uh, we came out, we had a pre, pre-meeting, uh, with a city inspector. We go through the process, we discuss the testing of the concrete as it comes out of the truck. We discuss the, uh, the process of timing. Uh, since the trucks are coming up from Colorado Springs, they have to come up in a certain factor that concrete has to be poured. Within a certain time period or it can lose its strength and, and not perform well. All of those things are fluxing, uh, activity a- and I have to, uh. Uh, say you got a great guy with the city inspector. He was there from the very moment we started in the morning till the very day we, uh, time we finished in the afternoon of every pour. Uh, at the end of the first day. City engineer visited us. He looked at what we were doing. He made two comments. He made a comment about making sure that the flow line was continuous and there was a good placement of cure on the face, the top and the back of the curb. Those observations were noted and we went on to make sure we did that. The balance of the day, the process continued and we went over about ten to fourteen days where we were able to get concrete, not get concrete. And your city construction inspector was there. Uh, on each one of those opportunities. I believe it was the fourth day of our pour, there was an observation of a potential hairline crack in the flow line of a section of concrete. Um, the city engineer was called out. He looked at that and there was a concern. Um, we looked at some opportunities and some alternatives to address that. And, uh, there was some discussion that came on to play. Couple of days, the next day after that, I received an email from the city engineer indicating that all the curb we had poured. Was not acceptable to the city and would have to be removed. Um, that surprised me because in the industry that I'm in and as a licensed professional in this state. You know, if a crack appears in the wall of city hall, you don't tear city hall down. You bring in a professional engineer to evaluate it and see if there's a repair. We had conversations with an engineer that was hired by Stone Ridge, um, Action Concrete and Tout Brothers. We had a meeting onsite with the. Uh, Kip Wiley, the city engineer, the city construction engineer or construction, uh, inspector, the city manager. And we walked this issue. Four issues came to bear. One was that the control joints that come every ten feet were not struck deep enough. One was that the control joints that come every 10 feet were not struck deep enough. They had to be 25% according to the specs. And those can be done by either striking them or saw cutting. And they weren't the inch and a quarter. They were done with a hand trial and weren't deep enough. The second one was the level of coating or cure that was placed on the concrete. The third item was the vertical face of the curb in sections was anywhere from out of being vertical, vertical from a sixteenth of an inch to a quarter of an inch and six, six inches. This was the same form that we used in filing four. It was accepted by the city. So this was, this technicality was a little bit new to us. So we said, okay, let's see if we can address that. And then obviously how, what's going on with that hairline crack? The city engineer affirmed the fact that all that concrete 2,000 plus feet need to come out. I you know, like a doctor, I'm going to look for a second opinion. So I reached out through our consulting engineers for a recommendation of a independent engineer that had experience in municipal utilities for a long period of time. We found a gentleman by the name of Thomas Peters. He he's a professional registered engineer. He was the quality assurance control. Is the name of this company. He's a retired engineer from the city of Aurora. And for over 40 years, he worked in their, in their engineering and and had their quality control in mind. We asked him to come down and give us a totally independent analysis. We took him out to the site. We dropped him off, let him do his thing. He wrote a report. We got the report back. There were recommendations that he made that we could make that would make this curb compliant. I thought that was kind of neat. But I wanted a third opinion. So I went to another professional engineer that was a retired engineer from the city and county of Denver. He was the engineer handling their public works, these kinds of projects. He was identified as the nasty guy in the field that they that they had to work with with regards to making sure things were done right in the city and county of Denver. He wrote a report. That report concurred with the original engineer. Based on his report and the original engineer, we brought in a crew to make those recommended improvements. We then had this third engineer who I sorry, I didn't mention his name is was Dave Potter. He came back again then to verify that the improvements we made, he felt were compliant based on the original recommendation. Little over two weeks ago, we gave that report or all those reports, the communications between the city engineer and us to the city manager and asked him to review it and give us a response. My understanding is there was a conversation with Dana, but I haven't seen anything in writing. The conclusion of the of the third engineer was that with those improvements, we would be compliant with the city specs and the standards of the industry. The city engineer is still saying we need to tear it out. If that's what you want us to do, then I guess that's what we got to do. I would like to get some kind of response from the city in writing. The concern that I have is this. These are two engineers that had over 40 years of experience. Each. I valued their opinion. I, I'm a little confused with the fact that if I'm the city engineer, why wouldn't I reach out to these guys by a phone call? Review their report. Riddle them with bullet holes if he wants to, but at least talk to another professional. There's an opportunity to maybe enhance his educational level and learn something. Or to convince the fact that he's exactly 100% right. I just don't know. And the city manager is not an expert in this field, so I don't know how he, what he's going to do as far as relying on staff or not. So that is the issue that got us to the numbers because the numbers that you see on the list cause for call for removal of the concrete to the city's estimate of almost $30,000 to just remove the concrete. I've got bids from from Earthworks, three days at $3,000 a day to haul it out, send it to the springs and recycle it. So I'm looking at nine grand. He wants me to bond for almost 30 and then I got to put another 15 on top of that. So that's the one issue that why we're here on that. The second issue addresses to pavement design.
Say that again, please.
Pavement design. The city specifications require in the design process that a collector's street have a minimum of four inches of asphalt and and a neighborhood street, a minimum of three inches of asphalt. I'm going to give you a little bit of a history and Kelly, I'm sorry that's going to maybe take you that you're a little old like me, but she's probably been around to remember this. Back in the late eighties, early nineties, the city went through a paving program where the gravel roads needed to be paved. I have to hand it to the management back then that what they did is instead of having to go out and test every road and custom design it to every road, they did some spot testings and came up with a process and a design that has been a policy of the city since that time and place. That policy was in lieu of doing a road design, six inches of full depth asphalt is what you put in. We did that in Evergreen Heights, Stone Ridge filing one, Stone Ridge filing two, Stone Ridge filing three and Stone Ridge filing four. Our drawings that were approved by the city engineer referenced that six inch full depth asphalt. We were then requested to do a pavement design. Okay, we got to do a pavement design because that's what the city engineer wants. I guess we'll do it. We go, we hired NTEC engineering, who's our project engineer for every filing at Snowbridge. They come out with a drill rig, they drill holes, they do take samples, they take it back to the lab, they do testing. They give us the values of the property and the ground and what it can sustain. In filing four, we use the six inch full depth asphalt. And we went through the testing, the proof rolling and all of that. And we ran into some soft spots when we were bringing in the trucks. I didn't want to have that issue happen in filing five. So I asked our engineer at NTEC and our paving group at Martin Marietta, what can we do to avoid that potentially happen? Is there something we can do to increase, increase the subgrade and make this bulletproof? They both came back with a recommendation of CTS. That's concrete or cement treated subgrade. The engineers take the testing information. They then come up with a design where the existing subgrade is added with a cementous product anywhere from two to three percent has is generally the guideline. And then that is tilled into the subgrade at anywhere from eight to 12 inches, depending upon the specific design. It is then moistened and rolled and tested and allowed to cure for potentially up to a week. The beauty of that and the reason why we were looking at that in October is because with our curb being completed in October, we wanted to try to get the first lift of asphalt down before winter set in. That didn't happen because we've been working on this curve issue since then. So we are now at a point where we submitted the design to the city engineer for the CTS with four inches in Stone Ridge Drive and three inches in Firestone. We received the following comment back. Your pavement design has been rejected. The design calls out local road design when your plans show collectors. In and three inches of asphalt is too thin for collector roadways to table five one. He is 100% correct on part of that. The drawings that he approved show Stone Ridge as a collector and Firestone as a non-collector. So his error on that was confusing from that perspective. Given the performance of the past phases and the subdivision and the clay in the soil, the local roadways need to be constructed with a thicker asphalt section. He's referencing filing four. Can't compare the two. We didn't do CTS and do this process in there. This is a sturdier road. The city needs to be able to adequately rehab in the future without having to fully reconstruct the roadway. Well, if that's the case, put it in your specs. We're okay with putting in four inches of asphalt if you guys want it on on Firestone. You want to pay for it? It's not required by the code. Our design met the code. We then resubmitted with the four inches and the and the design that you have and the numbers you have in our budget are that. But this is an excessive requirement over and above what the code called for. And based on his comments, I believe it's arbitrary. The last item on the list addresses what you call in your specification, private sector improvements. These, as you are referenced, are the dry utilities. Core co- Cora Cooperative Electric, Black Hills Energy, Natural Gas and the dry utilities with regards to communication. The and I'm going to refer to things specifically by section. So if you'd like to open up your code, you're more than happy to reference it, but I'm going to read it verbatim. And my only comment to you would be this. When the city engineer comes up and makes statements, please have him read directly from the code that he's that he's qualifying for because we've gotten references for C dot codes and Colorado Springs codes that aren't part of the Woodland Park code. So reference the E, I'm going to reference the email that I got from CJ. And before I, and it basically says this, this was as of Tuesday, May 2nd to 14th. As you requested, city council table the SDA for the Stone Ridge filing five until the first meeting of May, which will occur on May 4th. This item does not appear on that agenda since staff has not received updated numbers from you. Once staff has received and approved updated numbers as the SDA way, SDA will be rescheduled to for council action. That was questioned. Two hours later. Thank you from CJ. I got, thank you for sending the updated improvement cost sheet to us. You are correct in the four items that needed to be corrected. Those were the four items on the numbers list. We just did what the city asked so we could get on the agenda. The updated numbers are acceptable to the city. Lastly, as mentioned previously, the city code, section 1744040. The city will need a line item in this sheet for dry utilities and needs to be included within the local bond amount. Once the item for dry utilities is added and accepted by the city, we will be able to keep this project moving. Please let me know if you have any questions. We then became available to get on your agenda. I'm going to read to you sections of 1744040 called other improvements. All telephone, television and electric distribution service lines and street lighting circuits shall be placed underground. They are. The subdivider shall make the necessary arrangements, including a construction or installation of such facilities and sad shall be subject to all applicable laws and regulations for the construction of same. Furthermore, the subdivider shall give all dry utility providers, i.e. electric phone and cable, who have a current franchise agreement with the city of Woodland Park, at least 60 days advance written notice of the beginning of instruction. They had that and more. 10 days advance written notice of the availability of any open trenches. That was done and there weren't really any because the utility guys for TDS and Peak elected not to not to participate with CPI as Core Electrics installer. Provide such electric phone and cable utility providers with reasonable access to open trenches. This ties in with an implication that that's part of the improvement process. It might be subject to other issues. When I read from resolution 724 series 2011, which a death addresses the engineering specs of Woodland Park, it calls for all public infrastructure. The preamble on the purpose of the engineering specifications, it calls for the location and use and maintenance of all public improvements and common facilities. These include but not limited to sanitary sewer systems, water supply systems, private utility service lines to water and sewer, public and storm, private storm drainage systems, public and private streets, open space, parks and recreation facilities, traffic signals and devices, public and private parking lots and appurtenances there too. I'm not seeing anything about private utilities. So I'm now going to go to section 17080160, which is part of your SDA process with regards to where we are tonight. And it talks about improvements means all facilities constructed or erected by a subdivider within a subdivision to permit and facilities the use of lots or blocks for residential, commercial or industrial purpose. The improvements guarantee in section 1708230 is in a form of a security, including cash, deposits escrow in a form satisfactory to city council. Doesn't have to be satisfactory to city staff. It has to be satisfactory to you. You then go on to talk about major subdivision, minor subdivision and public right of way. I now go to section 1728 regards to the improvement guarantee. Completion of improvements. And this is where I've learned that I can thank the city engineer for telling me that I really need to read the specs and the codes because this is what we're doing. Prior to final plat approval, the subdivider shall complete in accordance with city specifications, all improvements required in these regulations and shall dedicate. And I say the word dedicate with emphasis, the same to the city in accordance with section 1728040. So those improvements are things that we have to dedicate. I talked with Black Hills Energy rep today and asked him if he was going to dedicate the gas lines that Black Hills Energy installs in the community. He laughed. Core Cooperative, if you learned what the meeting last time is a private entity. They're not going to dedicate their facilities to you. So I can't meet that section of your code. It then goes through the types of guarantees that are listed in the agreement. The last part is 1728040, which talks about inspection and certifications. The city engineer shall regularly regularly inspect for defects in the construction of required improvements. And by that, I'm assuming if the city engineer can't do it, the city construction inspector is the representative of the engineer and can. No improvement should be accepted by the city until all defects are corrected. I continue on in the second paragraph. Upon receipt of the other statements and agreements detailed above, the city shall accept the dedication of those improvements subject to the warranty provisions as outlined in the city engineering specifications. Here's where the rub comes. Reduction of the guarantee. In those cases where improvement guarantees have been made, an amount of the guarantee may be reduced upon acceptance in compliance of the dedication of a portion of the required improvements. If I have to bond for power, gas and communications, you have to accept it and it has to be dedicated to you. How can I get a reduction in my guarantee since you can't accept the dedication because you won't get it? The last part, 1728060, release a guarantee. Upon acceptance of the dedication of the final portion of the improvements, the city shall authorize the release of the remaining portion of the improvements. Our contract with IRE was was a quarter of a million dollars. This would mean that if you want us to bond, we would theoretically have to put up a quarter of a million dollars plus 150, plus 50%. That's $125,000. That's a $375,000 bond. Well, guess what? REA won't come out on the job and schedule us until we pay him in advance. So do I have to come up with $250,000 and 300 and some thousand dollars to bond an improvement that you have no jurisdiction over? Black Hills is the same way. You pay Black Hills in advance to get on their schedule. The utility guys as far as TDS, Peak Internet and Century Link, Century Link declined to come into the community. TDS and Peak are scheduled to come in. TDS has already gotten in. Black Hills is going to start next week. So I'm in a bit of a conundrum with the fact that I can't comply with your improvement requirements of your of your code. We've not bonded in the past for those improvements. You did bond on one thing with the Haven project at your last meeting. That might not have been appropriate. I don't know. That's up to your city attorney to tell you. So that's where we are. Those are the three issues. The curb and gutter, the pavement design that met the city requirements and was asked to be increased for no that met the city requirements and was asked to be increased for no apparent reason other than the city engineer's personal opinion. And then the fact that you're implying through the interpretation of the code of staff that we have to bond for non-public improvements. Those utilities are private sector. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, do you have any questions? Well, we're for the, for the applicant.
Not of the applicant at this time. I do.
You have questions for the applicant?
So, um, I hear what you're saying. So my question is what you're ask. In other words, with what we have in front of us, what you're ask.
My ask is pretty simple. I'd like a fair shake for the city staff to have, to reach out and give us an honest review of what we proposed for the curb. That's what I would really like. I, I, I got two engineers with forty years of experience that have had more engineer expense than your engineer's been alive. This is an educational opportunity to make your engineer better. You guys may not agree. That's an opinion. He's a good engineer. He spends a lot of time in his office working on hard stuff. Here's my concern. We're out in the field dealing with the city inspector. The city inspector tells us on day one, we're doing okay. The city engineer came out and said, look for these two things. Then second day poor, we're doing okay. Third day poor, fourth day poor, fifth day poor. City inspector says we're okay. City engineer comes out and lays out not only to us, but to his, his employer is designee. We got some problems. Well, if those things were that critical, we should have covered those at the initial inspection and the first day of, of that the city engineer had the opportunity to review. If I can't rely on the city inspector's relationship and we're out there doing it, it's going to put me in a position that I can only do one thing forward. Every time the city and, and city inspector comes out and inspects something, I'm going to have to have him actually sign off on it and define what's done on every trip. I've never had to do that. I've always been able to trust the integrity of the city inspector and that integrity I do not question. So that's the issue. If I can't rely on that process, we got a problem. Secondarily, if you want four inches, I'm okay with that. Just pay for it. Or go back to the design that meets the city specs. And lastly, I don't believe that we need to bond for the private sector utilities. Just the public sector utilities. And I think the code comments are good and you can't figure out if I do bond, I can never get my money back. Did that answer your question?
Uh, yes, except for the specifics on the bond. What should that be in your opinion?
This, well, the specifics, we did not put in here, the dry utilities. So there would be no change. It would just be an acknowledgement that the dry utilities aren't required. The issue on the pavement is we have a number in there for the four inch on both roads. If we go down to three inch, that means I can pull out the revised bid for the three inch, resubmit that and we would have an adequate number. The other thing is if I got to tear out all the concrete for the curb and gutter and I got to replace it all. The question comes in is why do, when I can buy curb from my guy at twenty-five bucks a foot and the city pays forty-five dollars a foot in their contract with Kiwit. Why? I mean, you, we've given the city our contracts to review. Those numbers are real. We're doing larger scale. So there's a, there's a savings in larger scale versus piecemealing stuff. We've used those numbers in the past. Our contracts have been accepted by the city in the past. This is a change.
So if you can get over the, uh, the reduction in numbers, it'll take the notes I took, you said it costs you about nine grand to remove it and the city's asking you for about forty-five to bond. My question to you is we've already had some experience in the city about that particular contractor who put in that particular curb and gutter.
I understand.
Yeah. So are you guys fine to read? I mean, and I'm basing this on the fact that I thought I heard a community member express concern about however, the pitch or the angle of that is, it's affecting her property. So by pulling this out, does it address those issues and solve it? Are you happy to the fact that yeah, you rip it out for nine grand and, and that's it? Or is that a sticking point for you as well?
Well, if I gotta rip it out, I still gotta replace it.
I know, but there's, but then you've got engineering specs to, to, to uh, handle.
Correct. And, and the lady you're talking about, actually, when the curb goes into place, that drainage issue went away because the water is now captured in the street. Now there is a slope and the lot next to her and the lot next to that is in a lower situation. So that's always going to be in a lower situation. But the drainage report that the city has approved captures that water and it meets the city specs.
Counsel, any further questions for the applicant?
None of the applicant.
Okay. Sorry, I have one quick. I'm trying, I'm trying to based on my notes, trying to understand the asphalt, you said, we did the city at six inches.
Yeah, in the past, the, the generic design without a road specific road design was six inches of full depth asphalt.
Okay. So, so that was just basically covering your bases because we didn't do the, the more intense.
The secondary.
Secondary. Yeah.
It's on every road.
Yeah, I, I get that. It's all of our current. Yeah. But for you, so I, I guess where I'm getting lost is the difference between the six inches versus the three and four.
The six inch was a choice. You can have Chinese, you can have Mexican.
Okay.
The, the six inch was no, no design required. Just go out and do it.
Okay.
The other one was city specs, four inches or three inches. And the reason why we chose to go that route because I didn't want to go through the subgrade issues we had in filing for. They haven't failed. It's been over two years and the city just earlier this last year accepted it after two years. So my goal as the project manager for Dana and Stone Ridge Village is to have zero callbacks on a warranty.
Okay, thanks.
And I think what I heard you say about that is this CTS process goes down twelve inches. And that's why you, and, and it's got this mix and it cures, et cetera.
It'll go to ten to twelve, depending upon the design. The city engineer has that design.
Right. And, and so because of that, three inches of asphalt's fine. I mean, is, is, is enough? You don't need six inches. Three is enough.
Yes, the, the, when I went back to N tech engineering, said, this is what the city wants. I, I got, it's not necessary.
Understood.
But it is a, the substructure process that you've laid out for us. That is a strengthening mechanism so that it reduces the six down to the, the three or the four.
Well, it, it me, it gives us a stronger base. You could, you could bring in class six road base and, and do those types of things. But when I got the recommendation from N tech and Martin Marietta, I reached out to some of the developers I know in the Springs and discussed with them classic homes, for example, uses CTS on all their roads uh, for the city of Colorado Springs. Um, so when I get a little bit of feedback for people, because I've never used it personally. So I got people a lot smarter than me telling me that's really good.
Okay, Mr. House, since we don't have our customer partners, did you have a question? Would you? Okay.
I have one.
I, I have questions, but.
I just have a, that's a small, simple question. Um, filings, one through four for the, uh, public improvements and, and infrastructure. Dedications. Before those were complete, what kind of security did you have to provide to the city in those filings?
Uh, we had a subdivision development agreement and with very each phase, we had different criteria that were done. Uh, one filing, all we ended up bonding for, I believe, was sidewalks and, and, um, revegetation.
Because they weren't complete.
Because they weren't complete. In, because we are a P U D, we have a sidewalk requirement. And part of that's, uh, part of those sidewalks are being installed at the time of ZDP installation and construction of the house. The primary sidewalk, that's the eight foot sidewalk along Stone Ridge Drive will be extended from Firestone to the north to the end of the first lot in filing four. And then beyond that, we'll incorporate that with a builder because we don't know where the driveway is going to go. Um, and because the city requires a sidewalk to be six inches thick if it crosses a driveway. So this gives the builder the opportunity to locate. We don't have to put in the, the sidewalk and then tear it out.
Sure.
So, and, and in the past, it's been one of those situations that we've typically had a, a year which could be extended. And if after a year of completion or whatever, there wasn't a link put in, we would come back in and put the sidewalk in. And, and I think that was done in filing two along the easterly side of, of Tarmigan. There was a lot owner that we had to come back in with them and, and get that sidewalk installed.
Okay. But there, you did bond for incomplete improvements in those first four filings.
I.
Generally.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. House, we'll let you have a seat and then we'll ask our city engineer to come up.
My questions can I, uh, answer directly?
Well, there are three issues in front of us. Why don't you give your presentation on each of the three issues? So we could, it's kind of like we've heard one side of the story to walk us through all three issues, your side of the story, please.
Absolutely. So first I'll start with the documentation of the curb and gutter issues. So primarily my job is to take care of taxpayer dollars in the future, make sure things are installed correctly per our city engineering specs so that they don't fail prematurely and we have to spend money to take care of them in the future. Uh, we've seen a lot of good examples around the city in previous phases where things have begun to fail prematurely, which is why I'm hyper cognizant of making sure everything is done correctly. So what we did was, uh, went out there when our construction inspector, uh, was watching on site, there's a number of different things that are going on on site when the trucks roll up. So it'd be like seeing construction happening at your house and y- you can't approve what the construction is until you see the final product where it'd be ready for when it's ready for construction. So when you look at the gutter and the flow lines, nothing's cured. You haven't seen the curing process. You haven't seen the finish work that comes behind the slip form machine. You haven't seen the full documentation of all the hall tickets. All of that has to be checked at the end of the pour to make sure that it functions correctly. So the curb had a number of fundamental plot flaws, which we documented and made the applicant aware of. And so when we interpreted the engineering code, our engineering code in the city does not provide much flexibility for finish on the curb, on the flow line and along the back, along the face of the curb. So what we did was we went line by line using C dot specs, which is what they're referencing to provide a little bit more flexibility to say, hey, this is non-compliant, but when you report it, here's what you can be held to so that you know exactly what your tolerances are. And this is standard C dot spec, uh, through their manual. When they elected not to complete those, they, they'd never sent any documentation to us. We never saw what the, uh, process was going to be before they, they completed it. So there was no approval to be had to say, hey, we noticed all this cracking. We've walked independently with your engineer and this was, he didn't document this to the applicant, of course, but he said, I probably wouldn't accept this. Uh, when the city inspector and I walked him on, with him on site. We also had a third party engineer that we'd use for the Kelly's Baldwin project. And he also agreed. Well, I mean, I didn't make this decision in a vacuum. He's got, uh, over twenty years of concrete experience as well. And he's like, there's some major issues with this uh, with the cracking. Here's things you usually look at. Here's the forms that you should look at, um, the way even the mix that they ran through the machine is incorrect. And, uh, so here's some things that you should watch out for. So we documented all that stuff and they elected to make improvements to the curb and gutter, but we're still non-compliant. The curb and gutter doesn't even match the typical profile and the approved plan sets. The curing was never approved by the city, nor does it have the correct documentation. Uh, a lot of the trucks failed when they came up, uh, for their, uh, air and treatment. There's a number of issues that we had. And so number one, we're trying to just make sure that we gave them all that information ahead of time. So they, they could remove it, report it, get everything put together so that they could complete all their improvements by last October, but instead they decided not to do that.
Okay. I want to be clear about one thing because the applicant, um, you mentioned one crack and you're using the plural cracking, meaning it's not just one, because I was scratching, you were going to replace all of this because of one crack. Is it one crack or is it multiple cracks?
It was multiple cracks along the flow line, which I mean, anybody that knows living in a mountainous environment, that's where moisture collects and expands and contracts. Both longitudinal in each one of the stones and, uh, and perpendicular.
And not meaning to get too far into the weeds on this, but uh, I heard the applicant tell us that they had the inspector on site, day one, pour one, two, day two, day three and day four. And so you said that you, um, checked the end of the pour, you documented your, what you said. When did you present this documentation to the, to the builder?
Uh, it was after the porter had been complete and had time to cure, because that's the time when you do the final inspection of the flow lines. Uh, you can use the ten foot level to check the flow lines, check the tolerances. Uh, you have all the documentation then for each day cumulatively that you can review to make sure all these changes were or that everything is in compliance with the concrete spec.
So so it sounds like it could be like a, a non, we could, this could be settled by simply saying, fine. Rip it out for nine grand. Put it back in, but you shouldn't be bonding for forty-five grand. It seems to me that that would be, we get it. It failed. It's not right. Pull it out, but don't over bond him on it from what I can see his ass. Would that be a fair comment? And I know you're not the money guy, but.
Well, I, I am in a way because the, the main thing that we're looking at with the unit costs and what we have to do is compare what the cost would be for the city to have to go back in and replace it. The private sector has always gotten discounts on on unit costs for things, um, because they don't have the same level of performance bond requirements, the same level of city procurement requirements that we have. But what we have to really look at is what is the responsibility of the city to go back in and replace this stuff and what are our costs? So when reviewing these submittals, what we're looking at is okay, what is an apples to apples comparing for comparison for unit cost. And in this instance, we had the same subcontractor, which is another level of, uh, security that I have for approving those costs. But what we look at is stuff like mobilization, that's kind of an arbitrary ones. We'll say, okay, that number we have to give to them, but the unit cost that I have apples to apples comparisons, that's what we need to hold to because that's what it's going to cost the city to have to call on the bond and bring in and fix all this.
Yeah, but it sounds like this is not a strange contractor. This is phase four. Is it phase five, whatever, phase five? I think their past performance kind of speaks enough, doesn't it, to not get too worked up about what that bond should be?
Well, the.
When he's given you, when he's given you numbers of what his actual costs are.
So the other concern is one of the previous phases, there was non-compliant curb that was installed and the whole thing had to be removed. And it was not recycled properly, uh, and taken down. And, uh, it was taken to a yard and buried inappropriately. That's not a, that's not the correct way. My point being is that there is an expense to recycling this correctly. And that's what we have to look at is what our contractors would charge us to remove it, recycle it correctly, provide the documentation. And, and that's how that number, that's how we came up with that number.
Please.
Our inspectors we have that we bring up from the Springs that are part of our inspection group. Well, what's our liability when they go four days of spending money for the client pouring concrete? And then after four days, it comes to find out he's approved it every single day. And then you show up a week later saying it's no good. How, how does that work?
And sorry, just to be clear, our, our city inspector didn't approve or accept anything during that time period because you, you can't accept it in real time as it's curing.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
So can I, I'm just going to cut in here real quick. At any point was our city attorney involved in this discussion?
Not for this bond issue, no.
Okay. I feel like it's, this is rising to a level that perhaps we need legal technical advice to be sure that either the city is correct or the applicant is correct. And even then there may not be an agreement, but I'm not saying that we distrust your professional opinion, but I'm also not saying we distrust the. I'm not saying that we distrust your professional opinion, but I'm also not saying we distrust the applicant's opinion. And I'm not sure at what point the city attorney should be involved, and I feel like we are at that point. And I'm, I don't want to do this to the applicant and council may not agree with me, but I feel like this is an issue that may need to be tabled until our city attorney has a chance to review the issue that's happening. And I'm not sure if council agrees with me on that. I'm not.
I I.
Right.
I I'm completely in agreement about the attorney, but I'd also like, Michael, do you you to step in and. Get a little, I mean, you're, we're the policymakers, you're the implementation. This is clearly an implementation issue, so I would. Look to you to be a little bit more of an arbitrator between this than. You you may not have been pulled in and and didn't realize this was coming at us. Um, but I would agree with uh the mayor to table this until we get a little bit more legal and technical review personally.
I I appreciate that very much, council member. Um, I'm not entirely sure what the what the attorney would be looking at, but um if. Not to put you on the spot, you know, but um.
Well, I was gonna say, I would, I would definitely need something specific from the applicant as to what the issues are and related to the, what the, you know, the code requirements and engineering requirements are so that I could.
That's the issue I'm hearing. I'm hearing there is a disagreement with the code. And there's a disagreement with some of the issues that I believe are legal issues, their legal requirements. So I'm hearing a dispute between those two things. And I think the city attorney should review those before we we make a decision, because. I don't want the city to be sued by a poor decision, and I don't want the applicant to be sued because someone gets harmed.
I am, I have a one question that I'd just like to clarify because. From, just from my experience over twenty five years, um, I don't remember that we've ever required bonding for. Other than the public improvements. Um, meaning the dry utilities.
Correct.
And I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't ever remember that as being part of what. A developer would put up security for. Um, it is those dry utilities, um, because that's outside of our purview. So I don't think that. I mean, that's just my personal opinion. I don't think that the bonding skip would include those public, those private utilities, if you will. It, you know, it's the city's infrastructure that we take possession of or what is the word um dedicate to us? And then they become ours and we maintain them into perpetuity. Those other utility providers for the telephone, the gas and and electric. Are not ours and we don't take dedication of those. They own them. And so I wouldn't, I would say that. It doesn't seem like that's appropriate or that we would be requiring bonding for those.
And so the main reason we're looking at it to Karen's point earlier, if lots have already been sold and somebody bought the lot thinking that they were going to get extensions for electric and gas. And we only bond and install the public utilities. Then it's left on the person who bought the lot to. Come up with whatever legal framework or the lawsuit to get the line extension for the for the other dry utilities. Which is why the city would have to facilitate that process of installing them.
Is, are the dry utilities there? Are they in the ground?
I don't have any documentation.
Okay.
Showing that currently.
I'm at a bit of a loss to your logic on that. When it says that the utility companies aren't gonna, you you don't get the control of that land. So how can you bond on something that you don't have? The jurisdiction of, I I I can't quite follow how that works for you.
Well, the city would have to complete those improvements. They would, the city would have to work with the utility companies to get those line extensions done. To to be able to make the lots whole for what they were originally sold for.
I'm gonna go ahead and let Karen address.
That is not. I've got a couple of points I want to put on the table. The first is, is part of reviewing a subdivision. Um, we're looking at um establishing parcels that can be bought and sold independently. And part of our responsibility is um to make sure that there is access. Um, and that there's infrastructure to support that lot. That infrastructure includes city utilities since we're the provider of those as opposed to a metro district. Or some other type of um water or sanitation district. And then there's also what we're calling the private utilities or the dry utilities. So the position staff is taking is that all of those are required as part of the subdivision process. In its section seventeen point four four point zero five zero of the city regulations that talk about. Um, the the subdivision improvement agreement. Where the subdivider shall agree to make and install all the required improvements. So that's really where this is coming from. The other part I want to put on the table is none of this has to be bonded. Because there's actually two paths to getting a subdivision completed. The first is they install all the infrastructure up first. And it gets blessed off on the dry utility companies say, this is great. You installed for our specs. Thanks for paying for this. Life is good. And they go through everything with all the city utilities. Same thing happens. When all of that infrastructure is installed and in place, then they can record the subdivision plat and sell those lots to other parties. In the event that they want to sell those lots before all the infrastructure is in place. That's what we need the financial guarantee for to back that up. That heaven forbid, something happens where the developer is not able to finish the project. The city then has adequate money in place to take care of installing all of that infrastructure. Um, for all those property owners that now own land that didn't necessarily have all the utilities in place. Um, nobody anticipates things going sideways. Um, unfortunately, with a different community I have served in previously, I saw that scenario happen exactly. Where the city did not bond for utilities that were not theirs. The developer who was local, who had been there forever, who always did things right for whatever reason. Um, had a failure and was not able to complete that development. It took that city twenty years to be able to finally resolve that particular development and call on the bond. Where the money was not sufficient to complete all that, and there were other property owners involved at that point. So the options really are, they can complete everything and not bond anything. Or the part that's not done is what needs to be bonded. So that's the subdivision development agreement side of it. With regard to quality of construction and any of those kind of issues. That's a little bit different issue that um typically does not land in your world. And that I believe one of your other council members here had already flagged that, but that's typically um addressed more to staff level. Thank you.
That's good. That just leaves really one question. Can you talk about the pavement design?
Yes, so the pavement design was submitted. The main issue that we had with the pavement design. Was that when the specs were developed throughout the whole city for the typical pavement design. They didn't look at necessarily the one area of Stone Ridge that has different soil types than really the rest of the city. So that's why we need to look at the specific pavement design for that area. Um, in speaking with Martin Marietta, who was the contractor that Mr. House referenced. Uh, we looked at it and he said, I would probably recommend doing four inches along this section here. And the other reason I agreed with that was because if we do three inches when we go to mill this. Uh, twenty years from now, even if it lasts, that one inch is not enough to get the milling machine. And and mill it effectively without affecting that subgrade and compromising it. So it's not as simple as just taking the top layer off and replacing it. You have to reconstruct the entire thing if the subgrade is compromised. And so while it's an improvement on the design, we have to look at it from a practical application of the maintenance purposes in the future. Of what it's gonna be like to actually have to repair that road. Can we mill and overlay it? Or do we have to do a substantially more expensive process in reconstructing the entire thing, which affects the curb and gutter and the asphalt?
So, so. Uh, I'm, I'm tracking with you, but I understood this CTS process. Have you worked with CTS before?
Extensively in Colorado Springs.
And what's its history?
Uh, it's, it reinforces the base below the asphalt, which is the intent to give a stronger subbit uh like base layer before you put the asphalt on top. It is a better product. However, we're looking at what is the the maintenance effect later on. When we have to overlay the road, because when we, we can't just mill down the two inches like we would before, leave an inch. Uh, left that will compromise the subgrade when we try to go put new asphalt back on.
But but you're stepping outside of what the code is right now. I thought it's three inches is your code. You can't just arbitrarily say we're gonna make it four inches for twenty years from now. If the code hasn't changed to meet that, can you?
Well, it's three inches or pavement design or what is required by the city engineer. That's the other big caveat in the front of the code. Because there's instances where you have to look at what are the soils and the conditions in that specific area.
Madam Mayor, uh, so at this, this juncture, what can we even consider as a council? It seems like there are at least two issues that should be arbitrated at the city manager's level. Um, possibly a a review of the bonding requirement for the um non-public uh utilities. So where are we?
Can we just table it?
Well, I think we can, we can table it so that it can be reviewed um with the city manager and city attorney. I think I personally think that's a good idea.
And my other question too, is this uh identified as an administrative decision or does it have some other designation?
This isn't QJ, correct?
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because otherwise it is to amend what we're hearing or it is to vote on. Vote on it as written with staff recommendation.
And and again, I go back to what part of it do we have the authority to amend? And I'm hearing that there are possible aspects of this that we we do not have the authority to amend.
I agree. So. Unfortunately for the applicant, I do think this needs to be tabled so that we can have a chance for the. City attorney, city manager and city engineer to review and as well as the applicant to make sure that we are doing the right things.
And do you think I'm gonna turn to our city attorney and to the planning director? Is is two weeks gonna be enough?
And Karen, I didn't mean to leave you out of the review. I'm sorry.
You're fine. Um.
Michael.
And we.
Well, what we mean, so what we're reviewing first. So I don't know if the applicant has in writing exactly what his civic concerns are. That we, that he feels we did um, the staff did that doesn't follow the code. So he needs to draft that, then I need to, we need to all review it.
I think he does.
We can leave it as a uh to a TBD. Uh, since we do not know what the documentation that you're gonna be reviewing is right now.
But I do think the applicant's prepared to submit that. It looks like he's prepared anyways, so. Looks can be deceiving, but.
Can I ask the applicant a follow up question?
Sure.
So how does this, you're in the process of doing your subdivision. How does this um affect your forward motion? Well. Timing wise. We were scheduled to pave in October of last year. We'd, we'd like to bring, but we couldn't do it because of the curb issue. So here's my question to you all with regards to the curb. If your decision is, it doesn't matter what we, what our report said. And what our engineers said, if if you agree with the city engineer and the only solution is tear out the curb, that's what we need to know.
Well, I think that's our issue is we're not sure.
And. I. I can take the curb down to Colorado Springs to a recycle place and and give it to them for free. They'll reprocess it and turn it into road base or rubble for people to use in driveways. So there's no cost for us to recycle it. It's just a matter of putting it in a truck. We've got our contractor who can get in there and do it. I just need to know if that's what you want us to do, that no matter what we present. There is no way we're gonna convince the city engineer that anything that's out there is acceptable. If that's the issue, we just need to know that. And at that point in time, then I don't, if if I get that stuff out, I don't need to bond for it. I don't need to bond for it until we come to you and want to record the plat. I do have an issue with the pavement design. The CTS is a better product than what we did in filing for, and I agree with you, councilman, that. It's not our duty to do maintenance. If you guys want, we're happy to do it. Why should the property owner that we're selling it to bear that burden? You're protecting the city taxpayer. I, I, I've got some questions with regards to some of the specs that he referenced. C dot specs, I can't find them at Willapark code. He mentioned, he talked to somebody. I I never got a report from the engineer that you guys had come out and look at. I've received none of this. The load tickets and things like that. Your city inspector got them. If we had a failure of a test in the con- concrete, they were retested and passed. Not an ounce of concrete hit that floor into a curb until it passed the the observations by the city inspector. And I disagree with the fact that you can't look at a piece of curb after it's been poured, because slip forming starts hardening up within an hour. And if I have to adjust the face of the curb, tell me, I can do it when the concrete is pliable. I don't have to come back and spend twenty grand saw cutting it to make it comply. So the big two issues are the specs that you're asking for that exceeds the code. And the bonding requirement for improvements that can't be dedicated to the city.
Yeah.
It's legal.
And I think, I think that we are a jack of all trades up here, master of none. And I think instead of making a rash decision on your behalf and the city's behalf, I think that we need some further um. Concrete. No pun intended.
Yeah, right. And that's fine. Uh, I would request that that if these reports that that the city uh engineer talked about. Um, I'd like to know who he talked to at Martin Marietta.
Sure.
Because I never got that same comment from them. Um. And uh, uh, if he said they'd came out and did this ten foot straight line thing, I'd like to know. Who did it, when they did it, and what the results were in writing.
As would we.
And and uh.
Skip, you can ask Dana, because he was out there with us when we were showing him the ten foot straight edge test.
But any written documentation that you have that has not been provided to the applicant. If it is legally available to him, should be made available to him. Skip, any documents that you have that not have not been made available to the city, if they are legally available to us, I would appreciate that you provide those as well. So that we can compare this information and make sure that we make a sound decision.
I can do that.
Thank you. So I hate to um put off your project and table this. I don't like to do that to anyone, but I think that. In order for council to make a sound decision, we need to do that.
Uh, and I, and I appreciate that, but the, we still have a choice. If we feel that we can't come to a resolution with the city on certain items, we'll just move forward and do the improvements we need to do.
Sure.
But the big issue is this. I need to know that when the city inspector is out there watching this poor curb. And he's taking the load tickets off every truck and he's doing everything. This concept that you can't see a piece of curb and know whether it's compliant until four or five days afterwards. I'm sorry, I have to degree disagree with that tremendously. We put water lines in and sewer lines in with valves and the city inspector looks at that and says, it's okay to bury it. If we're, if that's not the case, we're at risk for the city engineer to come along and go, I didn't like the picture that I saw on it. Why don't you dig it up and replace it? That can't happen.
Understood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And your presentation. I think it's uh quite a bit of information for us to absorb and we need a little bit more time, so.
Could I make a motion?
Please.
Could I make a motion that we table the approval of subdivision development agreement with Stone Ridge subdivision filing number five until May eighteenth?
I'll second.
And until all the questions are answered.
And we can table it again if we need to.
I'll second it this time, and I apologize for cutting you off, Frank. Yes.
Suluwaga?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Labar?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, council. Consider it.
Thank you.
Hey, hang on just a little bit longer. I'll get to reports.
I had no idea pressing on was gonna take at least.
Right.
Surprise. I know, right? Alright, I just have some dates to announce. Um, May ninth, the Cristola Bridge dedication again is at three P M. And come support the Cristola Bridge being designated as a national historic landmark. May twelve is Friday Night Creative Chill. May's theme is gonna be May Flowers. Register by May tenth through Parks and Recreation and you must be twenty one years or older to participate. May seventeenth is the Teller County reappraisal meeting um for residents of Teller County. U-Pass Cultural Center, five to seven P M. And again, that's May seventeenth. With the um Teller County Assessor. This event will not be recorded or live streamed, but the presentation will be available by request. May eighteenth is Kiwanis Bingo. It's back. The new day for bingo will be on Thursday going forward at six thirty P M. At the U-Pass Cultural Center. May twentieth is the high altitude baking class and you can learn to bake bread at high altitude. You need to register by May seventeenth and you can do that through Parks and Recreation. That is all I have. Councilmember Case?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Connors?
I do have several dates and I'm afraid that the people I'm gonna reflect this to are probably already sleeping. Or the veterans.
Good thing we're recorded.
Yep, on Thursday nights, after ball season starts with the vibes, our local ball team down in Colorado Springs. On Thursday nights, if you present an ID card, whether you're a veteran, active duty or retired. You get four free tickets to the ball game. That's every Thursday home game. Uh, they also have uh beer specials. On Tuesday nights, they have dollar hot dogs. So now for the dates. On the twenty seventh of May, and this is Memorial Day weekend, we'll be putting up flags at the cemetery here in Woodland Park off Baldwin. On the twenty eighth, the VFW will be selling poppies at City Market starting at ten A M. And on Memorial Day, we'll be doing a cemetery side service to honor our veterans on the twenty ninth of May. And other than the dedication of the bridge, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Nakai.
I don't have any reports, but I did wanna see if I could get uh another council member to agree for us to look into. What we can do to uh. Look at the accountability for the school sales tax.
Okay.
So. I just need a second.
Sure, if you don't get one tonight, you're welcome to.
Yeah, yeah, that's, but that's all I've got.
Okay. Is there anybody that's interested in that?
Oh, yes.
Very good. You got it. Okay, so do you want that on the next agenda or to be determined? Okay, you'll discuss it with staffs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, can someone?
Thank you, Kathy.
Can someone reach out to us or we, I don't know if we covered it or one on one or?
That sounds kinky, but yeah, we'll do it.
Wow, we just met. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Neil?
I have the shortest DDA board meeting report in the history of the DDA probably. Um, we approved three vouchers for payment.
Hey.
Hey.
But with the help of our new DDA board member Eric, we are going to start investigating what's next. That, thank you.
Councilmember Harvey, Eddie?
Uh, yes, and I do thank uh Councilman uh Nakai, Councilperson Nakai for suggesting that uh review. It, it is an obligation of the council to review the uh accountability of, of how our, our taxes are spent. Uh, but most importantly, thank you all for your confidence in uh putting me back up here um after. Having now sat here longer than I ever recall sitting here. Uh, I'm not sure I did the right thing. Now, again, thank you very much and I look forward to serving the next eleven months with all of you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zulawaga?
Well, it's less than a month to clean up. Cleanup is June the third, so if you wanna get on your. Your floppy hat and your suntan lotion and your gloves and come out and help clean up the city. Oh, sun, no suntan.
I just like, if I could make a comment about that, Robert, if you don't mind. Today I was driving back from Divide at an appointment. And are the sides of our highway are beginning to look a lot like I twenty five. Between here and Divide. There is so much trash on the sides of the road. And I just, I, I haven't seen that before and um. Anyway. I just thought I'd bring that up and say.
Are you telling Robert to get to it?
Robert, I'd like, I'd like for you guys.
Well.
Expand your horizons.
Well, actually, thank you for that, because uh the new board on the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, we um. When I was on uh PPACG, uh Rick Zamora, uh we talked about doing a um birthday cleanup. And so his people, he's not on that board anymore, but his people called and said, hey, we'll work with you, so uh but there wasn't enough.
Enough volunteers.
Yeah, well, just enough time to plan for, but the, but the uh C dot said they would do up to, up to uh Kmart. Let us do the city. Yeah, Walmart. Yeah, I, I could, anyway. Yeah, so up to, up to the, the, the Walmart. And then they would take up uh like out of town, like where you're talking about coming in from Divide. But we would uh organize doing the, the, the city part, and it's a liability issue. They'll, they're happy to work with us, provide bags, do all that stuff, but. Uh, they do cones and whatever else, and it's just, there's, there's that. So anyway, I support that into the future. I was getting that organized. And the other thing that Catherine and I went to along with Kip uh this last week, which was. I mean, you guys might wanna comment on it. It was fascinating. It was Arkansas Basin uh Forum for Water. And uh it was, it was very, very informative. It's a very huge, huge, huge issue uh nationwide now. But uh we gotta see all the little, what they do in the Fountain Creek uh with the fish, the collecting of them, the marking of them, the grading and all this stuff. It was very interesting. I know Kip did different workshops than I did and I, I didn't see it the ones I was at, so. So anyway, if you guys wanna comment, I thought it was, it was uh two days. And uh it was a great education and a real um awakening to how complicated water is for not just our city. To have our share, but to just to be part of the, the whole uh stewardship of, of, of that resource throughout our state.
Yeah, I forgot we did that. I've, I've had a crazy week. Um, this, I did, I attended the snow melt, the snow melt. How they determine the uh water every, or it's content, whatever that was, Kip, was fascinating. So Kip and I are gonna get together and discuss it, cause it was in, it was really, really cool how they, they're mapping the snow. How they think they can figure out when it's gonna start to melt, to figure out where to put sandbags and a whole lot of other stuff. Um, and then I did the Mesa Gardens. So that was how to garden in high altitude with our changing weather. That is cool.
I can just chime in real quick. I did all the opposite. Obviously, I did all the reuse water, all the fun stuff. So how to reuse our water? Save what we already have. No, they're all good. It's always good to see the folks, the, a lot of those folks I work with. Um, you know, month to month or year to year. Some of them I only see once a year at annual meetings for shareholders, but uh it's always good to see them and. Uh, fortunately, a lot of the water stuff uh doesn't apply, cause it's the wrong basin for us, but. You understand now kinda what goes into all the basins and moving water around and. Even most of the water in the Arkansas Basin comes from the Colorado Basin, so. Uh, cause that's where we get most of ours and we divert to the South Platte, uh, cause that's where all of our water rights are, so. Uh, I'm glad you both enjoyed. Um, it was good to get out a little bit. It was a crazy week.
There was another part that kinda connected with Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, and that was they have these uh s- street uh art. That they do at all the, all the storm drains. So they do all this different street art and they have some company designs a catcher. That, that will take everything that goes into the storm drain and they're big down in the Springs. I don't know, we have the same here and they dump straight into the Fountain Creek. And anyway, these things, they just take it and periodically every three months or something, pull the bags out. And none of the trash from the street goes down it, but you see what's in these things. There's a bunch of trash. Anyway, they're, they're very good, because otherwise we have the cleanup of the Fountain Creek of all of this city trash. I E McDonald Burger wrappers and, and you know, styrofoam cups and all the other stuff that lands in the street, but. Anyway, that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
City Attorney?
I actually do have a few things. Um, well, first I wanna welcome our new council member Harvey. Thanks of what, you know, welcome you. Um, the second thing I made note of is to see if there's support. Um, I don't wanna bring it up during a quasi judicial hearing, but. Um, support for our office to draft um telecommunications regulations that are similar to other cities um in our codes, since that doesn't exist.
Yeah, I think we brought that up actually at last council reports, but Jeff was here.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there's definitely.
I don't, I think he mentioned for me to mention it again, just to make sure there's support. Okay.
Okay.
And then just personal update, this is my last in-person meeting for a few months. Um, I'm due in mid-June to give birth to baby girl, so I'll be working until then. But I'll be seeing if I could appear virtually, probably in the June meeting or, and then take a couple months off, so.
Very good.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
City Manager? In the hospital room? Frank's a good catcher.
It's going to happen right now if you keep going.
Hit it, Michael.
I'm just sad I can't use that same response or excuse to not be here. Um, I too would like to welcome a council member, Carol Harvey. Welcome back to the dais. We, we appreciate having you here. Um, we also are welcoming um Grace Johnson back to the dais. Uh Suzanne will be out for the next couple meetings, and so Grace has been shadowing Suzanne, so we appreciate your patience. Uh, while Suzanne is out, because we're all hopelessly lost without her. Um, and finally, we, we also request your patience. Uh, it is pothole season. And if you haven't noticed, you haven't been driving, so uh we, we are out there getting around putting in cold patch, which is kind of a Band-Aid solution. Uh, I believe our superintendent and his team patched forty two potholes is what he told me on Monday. Um, so we're out there working very hard. Uh, we are very short-staffed in that crew and we, like I said, appreciate the patience, but we are getting to them. And uh, that is all I have.
Very good. This meeting is adjourned.